We're going to call the meeting to order for our, um, meeting for tonight, our study session. And we're going to begin with Will Paul. So Kate, will you call the role?
Stu Boy.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Don Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessin.
Here.
Nancy Rumpel.
Here.
Thank you, Kate. And Stu, will you leave and pledge?
I would leave.
It's right behind you.
Oh, alright. We're saying we pledge. If he wants it, be embarrassed. I don't know what we're doing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Stu. We need to begin with the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda as I print it in? I move we adopt the agenda. Thank you, Pam. Second sentence. So first from Pam and a second from Don. It's okay, please call the role.
Stu Boy.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumpel.
Aye.
Thank you, Kate. And the adoption of the agenda's been approved. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schaefer for introduction of our special events.
Yeah, so we are very excited to be here at beautiful Lucille Irwin Middle School. And once you know that this is the student group that will be presenting to us this evening in Lucille Irwin Middle School, so I'm going to invite Principal Jennifer Bradshaw to come and then she can introduce our guests.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Directors, and Dr. Schaefer. I'm Jennifer Bradshaw, the principal here at Irwin. Tonight, I have for you our GiveNext philanthropy group of students and our supervisor, Mr. Mike Emmens, who will be presenting about their philanthropy work this, that's a mouthful, this school year. This is sort of going to be a kickoff because also on May 17th, I believe, you're going to be hearing from other programs within our district as well about GiveNext. So we're sort of leading the way about the work that our students have done this year. So I'm going to invite Mr. Emmens and his students, our students up, and he will introduce them.
Is anything that pushes them?
Yeah.
Of course.
Excellent. Well, first off, it took me about a month, right, about a month to learn how to spell "fly". But this is the GiveNext program, and I have Savannah Delaney, an eighth grader this year, who's currently in the program, and then Jonathan Gomez, and he's this year, and then Kalea Marler, who was a member of GiveNext last year. So I kind of have a few people to speak today. But first off, I kind of wanted to just kind of give you an overview because just to see how the program runs. And then I feel like the best thing about it is what the kids do. Right, so I'm going to let them talk about their experience through it. How do I?
Just slapping out.
Okay, yes, please. Okay, so we've teamed up with this, the Bohemian Foundation, and specifically this program called GiveNext. And what this is, it's a school-based youth program that's really based on service learning and philanthropy, having the kids actually participate and do these things. At the beginning of the year, through lucky donors around Northern Colorado, we're actually donating $5,000. And throughout the year, we look at institutions that help out the public, help out as nonprofits, and we're able to donate that $5,000 to nonprofits in our area. Okay, so this all starts with this thing called the kickoff day. So every school involved, and that's over 29 right now in Northern Colorado, go to CSU, and we do this kickoff day where the kids are able to listen to the guest speakers talk about philanthropy and service and work in the nonprofits. There's youth professional speakers, and then they have experiential opportunities to actually participate with what some of these programs do. So there's one part where it's a fair, you guys get a lot of swag and stuff like that, right? They give out all this stuff. But then there's also classrooms where they go in and they go through this whole process, depending on what the focus of the group is. Okay, so it's all about when we start out, like, what is philanthropy? What is service? What is time, treasure, and talent, and how that works? And then what is a community? How do we build community? So we kind of define that, look through it, we look at the different communities we have and what pieces of that community we build up with. And so that's a big part of that. First, after we've done kickoff day, and you guys will be in some of these pictures. And the other thing is, I wish I had more pictures, but I'm horrible at taking pictures of things. I always forget, so I apologize that some of the stuff's just stuck. Okay, so we begin with when we try to find out what the issue is in our community, those issues. We could make up whatever we wanted. However, really, we survey the school, the student body, to find out what they feel the issues are. And the GiveNext class actually develops that whole survey. We send it out, we look at the numbers, and that really focuses us on who we want to look at, what issues, what problems we might want to look at in our community. And ultimately, those are the ones that we do a little bit of deeper research in. We go to their websites, we give calls, and we find out. We have to build a mission statement, and so they have mission statements. So we try to combine those together to see ones that best fit what we're trying to accomplish in our community. Okay, then we do interviews. These are the best part. Do you guys like the interviews? Yeah, and we do interviews where we actually invite these nonprofits that we've narrowed it down to to come in and speak to us. And they develop their own questions, they look at where these needs are. I mean, and it's everywhere from what's your budget, I mean, eighth graders talking about budgets and where you have your money coming in from, to how many kids you affect, and is the program sustainable. So it's an awesome, like, I love watching these interviews because they just, they ask the best questions. And sometimes they put them on the spot, so it's fun to see a group really happen to think about why they're doing something or where it's going to. And then we get our celebrations. So just so you know, we've been, I've been the sponsor, I've been honored to be the sponsor for over nine years. We've donated over $40,000. We've given to 18 nonprofit organizations, and there's been over 100 students come through the program in that time. One more. Okay, this is the best part. So we always get to do a little bit of our own fundraising. I'm sure somebody will talk about that a little bit. So every year, to try to add to that $5,000, they develop fundraising. This year was kind of tough with schedules and everything, but last year we were able to do a Pi Five, where you got to buy tickets, and then if you won the raffle, you got to Pi a teacher.
Or an administrator.
Or an administrator. And we've, just as a group of GiveNext, over 500 hours of community service over the nine years with the kids. And we've done that through the school, doing recycling, and they go out to their community where even trying to talk about this idea, that shoveling your neighbor's snow and not getting paid, that's service, right? So when we look at that, I mean, it's been well over 500 hours. That's just the ones that I was able to document over the last nine years. And then the last thing I'd like to do, and they're going to speak, but I just want to thank the Bohemian Foundation. This is a great program, student-centered, they make the decisions, they go through it all. It's wonderful. We get a lot of support from the Community Foundation of Northern Colorado, the GiveNext Advisory Board, Lucille Irwin and our administration, and Pumps at School District has always provided so much support for us. So thank you very much for that, but you've heard enough.
Hi, everybody. I'm Savannah, and I can talk just a little bit about what GiveNext has done for us. At first, when GiveNext, one of my friends came up to me, and another new member of GiveNext, he said, he told us what we do, helping nonprofit organizations, and how they have $5,000 dollars to learn to give to an entire one, or he also offered us, obviously, a career interview. Once I joined, we jumped straight into work at Byway. I learned everything I would never have learned in different classes. I learned about nonprofits. I learned what they do for our community, and I learned way more about learning how to help our community. Once we decided which ones we were going to learn, we chose Hart Jason and kind of lots of others. But we asked some questions that were on the list, so we were prepared, and we also asked some questions that they thought we were going to make. So that was, after that, we made posters when we were preparing for them for a celebration tomorrow. And once we did that, we all did our speeches, and we didn't want that. We've chosen two nonprofit organizations to split the $5,000 dollars to Hart Jason and Colorado Kids' Community. We chose this because Hart Jason is very different than what you would call, you go out to ensure that you teach yoga, you go trails, and much more tomorrow archery. And we chose Colorado Kids' Community because they give money to art teachers who are greatly unaccompanied and can't afford supplies. So art is a great way for them to help. That's all I have to say about talking about this.
But I believe there was a few comments, and I picked up a lot of the comments. Last year, I wasn't going to GiveNext because of the, I thought, I found that really fun. And then, once I got into it this year, I talked to everyone about it last year and about it this year. And then I just had an amazing time with, like, open, like, minds organizations, so I didn't worry about like, the big GiveNext at the same. I found that very fun because you got to, like, go around, meet people, and get to learn more about, like, organizations that not most people know about. And it's just a great way to, like, help other people, so you just put yourself, because I was like that when I was younger, taking a second to the program, helping out. And I came to talk, we, like, tried to make a decision on, like, after hearing, after some, we came back and read a bunch of papers and about, like, you know, the efficiency of it and all that kind of stuff. And it was like, we had to make a hard decision choosing, like, the top half of the list, and we'd have to come in and we'd talk about a project, and just, asking them a bunch of questions. And then we found our two, there was a few lines of same organization to need our money, and we found.
Hi, guys. I'm Kalea. So I am a freshman right now, so I was in GiveNext last year. And my experience is a little bit different than theirs. So when I joined GiveNext, I was, I joined a little bit late, it was about like halfway through the year, so I wasn't there for a lot of the things, like, that they got to all be together for their schools and stuff. I wasn't really there for any of that. But I loved my experience in GiveNext. So I joined because of some friends I had in GiveNext, and they told me about it, and I thought that sounded super cool, super fun, a different, a different group of people. In middle school, I, I always kind of struggled with, like, general respect of, like, my peers to teachers. I'd always see them treating teachers pretty badly, you know, just general disrespect about the school. And I remember the first meeting, it was really, really eye-opening to see another group of students that also recognized this. So immediately, I just felt such a connection to the people, to the teacher. It was super amazing. And so I already loved the program. Then we dove into starting to look at what is the biggest problem in our school. So we surveyed, and it came back with mental health. That seems like a trend with our generation, but mental health is just really hard, especially in middle school, when there's a lot of things that can go through people's heads. So we started looking at organizations, and there was two that really stood out to us. Three Hopeful Hearts and Child, ChildSafe. So Three Hopeful Hearts was an organization that let kids come at an overnight camp, that would allow them to just meet with other people who are dealing with mental health and a loss of a loved one. A lot of times, youth are neglected towards this because their parents are really struggling with the death, so they don't give their kids as much attention as they need. So they come to these camps, and they're able to get the attention, get the support that they're needing. So we really liked that program because we feel like, just by talking to people in the hallways and stuff, that a lot of people are, like, silently struggling with this, and it'd be a good way to give them support. And the second company we decided to split our money to was ChildSafe. This one focused more on the abuse of children and just the mental health aspect of all of that, that can be really traumatizing for kids, especially in middle school. So after we took, after we took that decision, we also decided to do our own fundraising, which was super, super fun, a great bonding experience. I think it helped the school get a little bit more involved with what we were doing. So we did the Pi Five, which was an amazing experience. It was, it was just a way to get the community involved, to get the teachers involved, everyone towards a common goal, which was really, really helpful for our grade, especially because we kind of struggled with values and things like that. So after we did the fundraising, after we picked the organizations that we were going to donate to, we first we met with them in an interview, and they absolutely aced it. We loved them. So that definitely helped us seal the deal with them. So we donated the money, I think it was 50/50. I'm not really completely sure on that, but we loved our choice. We were really happy that we were able to donate with them. And they reached out, and they've been keeping in touch with us and asking us to be able to participate in their events and things. So it's been very, very fun to work with them. GiveNext has a lasting effect. Even though I don't, I'm not currently in it anymore, it definitely taught me a lot of lessons that I've used throughout my life in high school and throughout my life, even after, after, like, being done with the program. It taught me a lot about community and how you need to try to be a leader, not only through big groups of people, like assemblies, but also working towards one-on-one, like, with certain leaders of companies, you can work things out with them and see what their, like, intentions are and things like that. So it really teaches you leadership on a big scale and a little scale. It also teaches you a lot about relationships and the important things about relationships and service. I think the biggest thing to learn a lot is how to do service with wanting to receive nothing, selfless service. So I think that GiveNext is a really great example of that. We are giving our time, our energy, to try to find a perfect nonprofit to give it to, but our school doesn't directly receive any impact on that. But we just really wanted to help our community. It was such a great program to be involved in. And yeah, it's lost in practice, helping me through a lot. So that's mine.
That's our presentation. We do have any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation. How do you get into, I mean, is it after school? Is it a period during the day? And how do you get into it?
So for us, it was a Wednesday advisory class. So every Wednesday, there was this morning class that was pretty much for study home and to get homework done, whatever you need. So we would always meet in a room next to his, and we just had, like, 45 an hour to just meet together and decide that. How you get into it? I think we just talked to Mr. Emmens. Did we have, I don't know if you made people, like, put in a form?
Well, the vision, what's happened the last couple of years, maybe not this year, is that the eighth grade goes in, because they're mostly eighth graders, and they present to the seventh grade, and the kids who are interested, well, applications. And then there's a lot of, like, asking people at the beginning of the year. But your guys' time is different than Kalea's.
Our time now, we have Thursday's and Friday's advisory, and then even every once in a while, we'll even go for lunch with people we're willing to. That's this year, and sometimes we work outside of school for some speeches.
Awesome. Thank you. Other questions?
How many, how many students are involved in the program this year? We have about 14 this year. My biggest has been 20, but with 20 and getting over those numbers, it's hard to have this really focused view of service and his movements. You get a little bit clunky over to one. But I take anybody who comes in, but usually my number is, like, we have 14 this year. With the group last year, we had 11. A couple of years ago, I had over 20s. Thanks.
Other questions?
I will say, so the three of you are phenomenal public speakers.
Yes.
You actually have two former speech of the day coaches here, so really well done, memorized. It was from the heart, very compelling, so we thank you. Great job. Reminder to the board, on May 17th, we're going to invite a high school and a pre-K8 GiveNext program to also present to as well. But I think you did an exceptional job presenting for this, so thank you very much. So we have a, some guests here from beautiful Berthold, Berthold High School, and I'm going to ask our winter guard to come forward, and I'm going to read some nice stuff about you, and then you can share what you want. But so let me, my public speaking will not be as eloquent as our, I have to, so. I'll take a moment for each of us to wish just really sincere congratulations to the Berthold High School Winter Guard Flag Team. They took first place in their classification at the state championships last month. This was the school's first year of having a color guard. It's extremely impressive that they were able to achieve such an impressive honor. Joining us today, and I hope I don't butcher your name because I'm doing my best, Megan Templeton, the team coach, as well as students Scarlett Austin, Caitlin Horvath, Lizzie Smith, Ben Smith, and is it Makoto?
Makoto, yes.
Makoto Feller, who isn't here. So congratulations to the team. Again, first year, and that's a state championship.
Yes, that's great. So what do you expect now for the next, are you gathering more people to join more?
Right now, I have two graduating seniors, so Scarlett and Caitlin are two, are leaving us. So Makoto and Lizzie have been pretty real far, and we're looking at almost doubling our size, going from five to eight. We are so thrilled to have existed and have the support from Berthold High School, from you guys, from the Director Shawt heading. Just the support has been so amazing. We're so excited to exist and to bring all this.
Great work.
Is color guard, is that just, like, precision, is it the flag?
Yeah, precision flag. So if you've ever watched marching beyond the flag part, they, the kids, all four of these students were in the fall marching program where we got second. Makoto joined from the winter, and we were able to compete.
Great. Do you have any comments, questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Go Spartans.
So we would love to actually, we could take a picture with the class teacher.
Yeah, no worries.
We'll stand. Like what's, we recommend, so you can all get a picture.
Let's have everyone come here and just, yeah, face me this way. It'll be nice if I spoke my tongue.
We'll stand.
Alright, ready?
Thank you.
Alright. Is that it from you? Okay. Alright, moving on to our discussions. These are items that will appear on our agendas for our next meeting, which is, I believe, the 17th, is that right?
May 17th.
May 17th. And what we'll do is, after we've had our presentation or our share, from, then we'll each have an opportunity to ask questions if we have questions, and you don't have to have a question each time, obviously, but we'll start and we'll have, have an order all the way around. Okay? Alright, we'll begin with 4.1, which is Turner Middle School Field Naming Dedication. So Todd, no, Bill. Why did I think, oh, Todd, because of, it's a field.
I have a team here, so does the board feel comfortable? We just stand or sit or?
No, that's whatever you guys want to do.
I'm a team. Madam President, the school board, Dr. Schaefer, Lucille, our Chief Human Resources Officer. So we're here tonight to kind of discuss, you know, the great work that Stan Kaufman has done for Turner Middle School. So the board policy, like, a part of board policy is when it says site, you know, as you go through policies, it says athletic fields. So when athletic fields, an individual making significant contributions to the district, we would present to the board and kind of answer any questions and go over who Stan was in the testimony. So that's what the presentation is for tonight. I'm trying to speed through this so others can have time. So the discussion is the committee members, and there's 20, there's 20 committee members, so I'm not going to name all 20 because that takes extra time, but the ones that are highlighted are the ones that are presenting. So me being the Chief Human Resources Officer, but I'm also the former principal of Turner Middle School, and Stan was a part of our team at Turner, so that's why I'm standing in front of you. We have Wright Smith, who is currently the Mountain View High School Counselor, but he was Turner Middle School Counselor at the time. We have a former student here, Will Carisbeck, who's the current Berthold Mayor. I was waiting for her to say, oh. Yeah, they recruited the mayor. Now saying, no, no, we have the mayor. And Ellen Causio is a community member, but he is a former educator as well. And Chrissy Leonard, she is currently the tech teacher at Turner Middle School. So a part of it is to have testimony. So the principal, the current principal, next slide. Yep, so the current principal, Brandy Graves, she couldn't be here tonight. She had an event to go to. But there's principal support first. That's where we started, to get support from the current principal. And as a current principal of Turner Middle School, I fully support the athletic fields. At Turner Middle School, we named the Stan Kaufman Athletic Complex. Having been in education for 23 years, I understand the importance of and the impact an individual can have on the lives of students, staff, and communities in which they serve. It is an honor to be able to recognize one such individual, Stan Kaufman, and his life's work. And also, I just want to tell you, of the 20 members, everybody really would want to be here, but there's events going on right now, baseball, you know, we have the baseball coaches that were the head school that I'm involved to.
Alright, well, thanks, Bill. So like Bill said, I'm a counselor over at Mountain View. Been there, I was about to finish out my 10th year there, and then before that, I was nine years at Turner. Got to know Stan Kaufman, obviously, as a colleague there, but also coached for him. So he kind of roped me into coaching, mostly boys and girls basketball, but learned a lot through his mentorship. The committee, as we've been meeting, just kind of prepared, like, a little statement just to kind of give you a flavor for Stan's life and his career and impact in the Turner community in Berthold as well. So I'd like to read that. It's our honor to recommend that the athletic fields of Turner Middle School be named the Stan Kaufman Athletic Complex in recognition of Stan Kaufman's lifelong dedication to supporting both the athletic achievements and the overall well-being of thousands of young adults over a 37-year career. Stan spent the first years of his educational career at Leveer Middle High School in Ovid, and then at South Park Middle High School in Fairplay. In 1986, he began coaching football and basketball at Turner Middle School and then Berthold High, while also substitute teaching, working as a school manager, and doing odd jobs for the Berthold Recreation and Parks Department. He then spent a couple of years teaching at both Turner and Colorado Ball Middle School before becoming a full-time PE teacher and athletic director at Turner in 1990. Very dedicated the next 26 years of his life to supporting students' physical, emotional, and social well-being. And after retiring from teaching in 2016, he continued serving as Turner's athletic director for an additional four years. Over his three decades at Berthold, Stan's contributions extended far beyond the classroom, as he coached football, baseball, track, boys and girls basketball at both Turner and Berthold High. Year after year, Stan earned the respect of his students, his athletes, and the Turner community as a whole. He pushed students to reach their highest potential with his unique combination of toughness, compassion, and tireless effort. He encouraged discipline, focus, and preparedness and all. Throughout the years, Stan generously and consistently contributes time and energy to the Turner community by helping organize and run dances, the annual Rock Turner Classic Five Day Race, and something that I often helped out with, the Stan Kaufman Coed Relay, which raised over $3,000 annually for six years home that entered Turner athletics. To this day, Stan considers the students that he taught and the athletes that he coached to be his kids, and he remains connected and dedicated to the community, which has given so much. For these reasons, we sincerely and wholeheartedly recommend that the Turner Middle School Athletic Fields be named Stan Kaufman Athletic Complex.
So also, first bullet point, I always appreciated how Stan would recruit kids who would never get involved in a sport like track or basketball out of their own initiative and make them believe they could contribute to a team or the school as a whole. He knew the value of building kids' confidence through sports. Stan was a selfless coach. It was never about him. It was about the kids. He would always try to put kids in a position to be successful. He would also spend countless hours preparing before track meets in order to put athletes in the right events so they could win. On several occasions when it snowed the night before a home track meet, instead of canceling or rescheduling, he would go out and shovel the snow off the track so the kids could compete. He always wanted them to have a good experience. I, Stan always took attendance by hand and said every kid's name as he walked by them. I asked him about it one day and he said, "That might be the only time all day that you hear a teacher say their name, and it's not them being yelled at." This way, they feel that their teacher likes and respects them. When the high school? Oh, that's you. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I got so sad.
So I worked with Stan for many years and I started out, I went on out to him just for a long time. And worked with Stan, we coached track together. And I, and one of the things we did, we coached PE together as well. And that first one is one that was very important to me because it taught me that, you know, how often our kids come and we don't, we don't hear their name, we don't know what they're coming with, or any of them. First time that they ever had their name said in a positive way is from, you know, the teacher just greeting them. We also coached, I also coached Stan in track, which was definitely a core call. I would say that for basketball. But when the high school won a state championship, the kids, they returned back to TMS and gave Stan a ring for the championship, you know, to honor him for starting them off at middle school. And that just kind of shows the impact they had on the kids in there. You know, if they retired from the athletic career rather than just three years in middle school, he would really help. And then lastly, just Stan cared for every one of the kids that we had. He always wanted them to compete at the level that they could be successful at. So we spent hours and hours going through track line just to make sure the kids were in the best events they could be. But then when Thompson School District decided we were going to leave the district that we lead that we were in and compete against Turner at that time, it was a very small school, and that we were going to compete against these giant schools like Uso over and all the other Thompson schools, as well as some of the ones we used to, or we use, the ones that are in them. Stan really fought against that mainly because he just really wanted the kids to be able to be successful at their competition and their level.
Okay, I've known Stan for like 35, 40 years. He's a great guy and a couple of things that he did, he invented a number of devices, arrivedants for athletics. He created a push-up machine that lighted a bulb all during time and just to get up and sort of school record would be set fairly. For breakaway hurdles were available, he put springs on the hurdles to make them pop back up so the kids didn't fall. He acquired a springboard and created a bungee system to help his high jumpers learn from the porch. Such things were available commercially. Stan made a wagon to pull behind his golf cart, very starting blocks and others, his track equipment. He adjusted desks, put in a gym, so more kids could play volleyball and that. And many of these inventions of Stan's are still being used. And this one is directly from me. Stan was one of the best hires that I had during my time with Berthold Recreation. Stan, being raised on a farm, had a great work ethic, went above and beyond expectations and carried them over to his education career. He was a great motivator of youth to do their best and was very influential in developing athletes, both mentally and physically, both of the two just.
So thank you for the time to present. Are there any questions about the board?
I just have a comment. I knew Max Mar, Max Marfield, and I think this is a really great kind of a companion. This is a really good fit because Max is so similar to Stan and the legacy that they have both created and left for the community is extremely similar. And I just, it's a cool thing to see, you know, Stan follow, kind of follow Max's footsteps, if you will. So I think it's pretty awesome. Job well done. Anybody else? I think it's great. Thank you, thank you so much. Good night. Thanks. Yes, appreciate it. All right. So four point two is the Head Start Community Assessment. And Sarah is here to introduce our speaker, or speakers.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board. Sarah Rastuson, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And yes, I'm here to introduce Lam Carroll. Lam is going to share the findings of the Head Start Community Assessment and just a little bit about the timing of this assessment. The full-blown assessment is actually done the first year of the five-year Head Start grant. And then the requirement is that they update the findings of that assessment every year. So annually, we do an update. So this evening, that's what Mr. Rastuson shared.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. Lam Carroll, Director of Early Childhood. And like Sarah said, I'm here to share the update of the community assessment. So as you can look at the Strive 2025 connection, it's very specific to, we want to provide access programming through additional facilities for our program with highly qualified staff. And then the stewardship of resources that through intentional budget planning, we can align our resources with the staffing models to support the UPK program. So what I want to highlight in the statement is it really describes what we do as a program, but the important part to know is that we are providing the correct services for our program. So we identify key areas, and I will tell you that because of universal preschool coming, that's where our primary focus will be to get to the school here. Next slide, please. So Head Start has asked us to take a look at all these areas of our program. So it's a pretty comprehensive look of what we, who we serve, what we need to look at in programming, and what's out in the community. So for us, and in particular this year, we really took a close look at health and social service needs. And then again, about, I know it's called childcare availability, but it really is about providing slots to the UPK, for the UPK program. So I will say, the good thing about when we look at our strengths every year is one thing that I'm always so proud of is the partnerships and the collaboration and the work that we do with the different community providers in the community, because it does remind us that we're not, we're all working together to help support families and kids in the program. So when we look at this list, one of the new ones is that they added, I think I shared in the past, that students and families could get passes to the Fort Collins Museum of Discovery at Fort Collins. But now, a new piece is that they can also get it to the Gardens, Gardens of Spring Creek. And so that's a new piece, and we've had 57 families already take advantage of this year, so it's a good number of families taking advantage of that. And then when we look at the resources, because the other part is that we really want parents to have access to growing themselves too. So when we look at the educational opportunities that are here in the front range, it's great because they also, just as much as the parents want to attend, the schools want to help them attend as well. So we have different partnerships going on, and in fact, with CSU, we've looked at creating some online modules for parents to access to start beginning some work. And so it's in the beginning stages, but we hope to get something going next year or two. So next slide, please. And this is actually the most important one. So our focus areas, I should just preface that we have a lot of things that we're still working on. Like, we recognize that families still need to help with housing resources. We recognize that families still have food insecurity and so on, so that work doesn't go away. But what is important is that because this is the first year with UPK coming up, we want to make sure that parents feel supported going through the process. That includes all getting the documentation required for Head Start, Colorado licensing, and for our school district. The other part is that we also knew that the first year of the implementation would be a little bumpy, and that has proven to be true. So one of the things that it doesn't capture is that, so for example, a Head Start student that may have SNAP benefits, it doesn't capture that in the application process. So we recognized that right away, and so we've expanded our efforts to make sure that parents do know about that so they can access our program. So we've had to create a different way and access portal for them to get into the program.
We have to define SNAP.
Yeah, it's a, it's a food program that provides additional funding for parents to access it. So thank you for asking that. So then the other piece of that is, one of the things we want to do is make sure that we meet the community need. So that means having the facilities ready and the staff to meet in the classrooms to support the kids. So we've, we started interviewing back in March, and we've been interviewing almost every two weeks to try and get additional staff to those classrooms, because we do want to meet, make sure that we have facilities and the staff of those kids as they come through the system. We just wrapped up the first round of applications, and we're supposed to get the next batch here in two weeks. So and then for the next, through the summer, every two weeks, we'll get a new batch of applications for the program. The other piece that came up as a need was from our data, parents had indicated clear interest on social, emotional support with their children at home. And we agree because we think that if we can develop that partnership at home and to the school, we can really get to the work of learning. And so when they start developing that self-regulation, that executive function, we can really focus on getting into literacy and math and the things to get them prepared for kindergarten. So some of those things could be one of the, you know, when you think about the importance of play, it is really important because especially with preschool, developmentally, that's where they're at. They learn through play. And so I know some of you had a chance to go into classrooms and look around, and so when you look at students interacting with teachers, there's a lot of teaching going on, although it's not in the way that we're used to seeing it. So there's a piece called The Power of Shwanga, and it's essentially, the title is just being there for your child, being there for kids, and being there first for your kid. It's not necessarily about school, but being there as the adult that cares for them. And that's one of the things that we really focus on in the classroom. And then this was specifically a press from our policy council that they think teaching parents in the escalation techniques would be powerful. So we took that to heart, and those are some things that we're working on to offer next year. So that's the, I don't know if you had a chance to go through that. I know that I've summarized it into a very short amount of what we have, but that's where we are at. So questions?
We'll start over by Don. You have any questions?
No, thank you.
Not a question, but just a comment. Again, this is a really excellent report. Every year, I think it becomes more comprehensive. Thank you for answering the questions that I sent your way and also for addressing the one concern that I presented.
You're welcome.
Nancy?
The report itself really has a lot of information. I was really, I have enough numbers, so I just thought.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we also share that with other providers in the community because it's just, it's not something just for us, right? It's good for other providers in the community.
And then the other thing, though, is, the more important thing for me is seeing the SEL workshops for the parents, I think, is so great. It's something that I have talked, every time that we talk about SEL, I'm always, you know, how are we engaging with the parents on the day of, how are we? And so I think, started at this level for these kids, it'll be interesting to see as they go all the way through school because it started so early. So I think it's a great, I think it's a great program. So I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, you know, you just really dial into the needs of the kids, and I love that you're making a school culture for kids and families who know that that is their community. And that's where, like, I always say, school is the kid's job, you know? And like, and it takes a village, and I just love that. And I think having the SEL for the parents as well and then start using that common language, you know, where it's like, we don't do this at school, we do this at home, you know? And where you can blend the two and just, I think, the common, again, the common language, expectations, the verbiage is just super important. So thank you for.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Your report is phenomenal. So Lam, does, was the state helpful in getting all your questions answered? Did they have answers for them, or did you have to keep digging and digging?
I think we're still working together to try and answer those questions.
Okay, well, okay. And then you said, yeah, yeah. You said every two weeks you get applications. Where are those, where are they coming from? Are people, is it through our district or is it through the county one, the early childhood?
Yeah, so anyone that applies in Lamont County, or actually anywhere in the state, you can apply for a specific program.
Oh, okay.
So they could come from anywhere, but for us, we are looking specifically at Lamont County.
Okay.
And in particular, we're looking at serving the kids in the Thompson School District first. And so it gets funneled that way. So there's a clearinghouse that initially they go through at the Early Childhood Council, and then we get those applications.
All right. And have you been able to place?
Yeah, so we did, the first round of notifications went out on April, or just last Monday. And so we should get the next batch here in a week or two.
All right.
So far, that is just, we're just having to make some adjustments right now.
Well, except you're.
Yeah.
You're zero.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So try and figure it out. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Well, thank you for your time.
Of course. Happy to see you. All right, our next item is, maybe this is going to be Todd since Bill came up first. I'm sorry. I'm just kidding. Four point three, probationary licensed staff contracts. Oh, I got it dirty look.
Hi, everybody. Chief Human Resources Officer, Madam President, the school board, Dr. Schaefer. So basically, the purpose for the probationary contract, so there's statute, and this is an important part to see, it's not a part of the purpose, but an employee contract with a probationary teacher shall not exceed one year. So probationary contracts are single years, like three single contracts, and then when they have three years effective evaluations, on the first day of the fourth year, it becomes an operation contract, and a non-operation contract is a returning contract. So that's why we moved it forward for the board to kind of approve, like a probationary teacher, meaning we hired them year one, and then they're being offered a contract next year, but the board has to approve that. So the board also approves like resignations, non-renews. But basically, that's what the approval is, is to move a P1 to a P2, P2 to a P3, just that ongoing one-year contract.
So what do you need us to do? Are you going to, is there more to this that we need to see?
No, there's nothing you need to see.
Okay, just to be aware.
Yeah, so last year we did a vote, like this year, we're just having a discussion before it moves to the vote because of the changing of the board meetings.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
So when, it'll be on our agenda as just a consent, an action consent item? We don't see a list or anything, just agreeing that this is the process?
Correct.
Is that okay? All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, four point four. Is it Todd?
Did you want to borrow it?
Yeah, give me a minute.
This is budget adjustment at PPU Academy School at Conrad Ball with an addition of $700,000 grant money.
Yes, good evening, board. My present board is case of Dr. Schaefer, top company chief operations officer. Tonight for questions and recommendation is an additional $700,000 towards the project budget at the project at Conrad Middle School. So the district became aware of a grant opportunity through the Colorado Health Foundation that was focused on accessibility, inclusive play, and really community spaces. So through the design and development of the play area, we were successful in the grant. And with this, work is starting to go. So we're going to put this money, put this money into the project to then produce a really more, what turns into a more elaborate play area that includes more hard surfacing, kind of rubber surfacing, different types of apparatus that we particularly don't do, and then different type. So, through the design and development of the play area, we were successful in the grant. And with this, work is starting to go. So, we're gonna put this money, put this money into the project to then produce a really more, what turns into a more elaborate play area that includes more hard surfacing, kind of rubber surfacing, different types of apparatus that we typically don't do, and then different type of play areas. So, the process is really community-driven. The process for the grant required a lot of community input, design, and then a full sum of that design. And it also includes other phases. So, this was phase one. It includes a master plan for the site, which includes then other grades and areas. So, this is step one. As we continue the development of the site, we'll be able to then include the rest of that. So, tonight for questions is just adding that $700,000 to proceed with that work.
This is not touching the early childhood or is this including part of the early childhood?
It actually does touch some of the early childhood.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to know. That was both playgrounds or just one of the other?
Yeah, it actually touches that entire, that I'm remembering here, the entire elementary area.
Play area.
Play areas. And then some of the middle too. It's more towards the primary elementary school.
Thanks. Austin, questions? Good morning, questions? Congratulations, Austin. Yeah, keep writing those grants.
Yeah.
Okay.
Your report to approve for us.
All right, and I think you're here for the next one too, right?
I am, yes. Unless Bill wants to step in.
Bill, do you wanna help?
There's a seat right next to him. He can be the type.
This is 4.5 bond contingency at Kerry Martin Elementary School for $70,000 for gym floor replacement.
Yes, so tonight for discussion is recommendation to place the gym floor at Kerry Martin. So, again, on our strike 25, it's just showing transparency and where we're putting the funds. It was observed that the gym floor was in disrepair. It was work that we were hoping to do during the actual bond project. We needed to close the job out to make sure we had funds to do all the work that was there. After reevaluating and looking at the work, it needs it. It's at a point to where we can't repair it anymore and it's really, yeah, it's not, it's almost becoming a safety hazard towards that. So, this is allowing us to move forward with the placing of the floor and the typical material that we use throughout the district. So, it's an increase of a budget to the project for the $37,000 even though the actual cost of $47,000. We have still the other $43,000 or, see I'm turning my head, it's not working, $33,000 in the bond project already. So, it's just an approval of the $37,000.
And is this the same kind of floor that was put in to, where were we yesterday?
Oh, we go yesterday and then.
We're on Lorain Evans.
Lorain Evans, yeah.
It will either be like that or similar to.
Okay, all right. When is the life expectancy of a gymnasium floor?
The new type products is a 20-year, I mean, it should be 20 years. And the good thing about this new product, the new products, is it's not wax-based, so it's less than.
So, it doesn't have to be?
Doesn't have, the labor to take care of is less than typical.
Okay, okay, thank you. Other questions?
And the money for this comes from?
So, we're proposing taking down the bond contingency that we had.
Okay, bond contingency, okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, Todd.
Good.
All right. 4.6 is proclamation recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week. This won't be read today but next week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And we usually read the proclamations when we have a full-blown meeting. So, I just wanted to tip this, anything I, anything more we need to say?
Do you wanna maybe share the idea?
Okay. Sue's gonna read it next week but he came across the book and, was it on the Today Show? Was that what he told me?
It was actually talked about on the Today Show. It's one that's just been recently released that contains memories of famous people as those memories pertaining to influential teachers that they had. And so, I contacted Barb and Dr. Schaefer and I said, at whatever point we do the proclamation, could we ask each of the board members to talk very briefly about one person and their K-12 experience who really had a profound impact on them and probably have a profound effect on who they are today.
So, that will be what your assignment, quote, the board report next week or next meeting, is that I'm gonna ask you to be one of, that will be one of the things you include is a teacher that impacted them, correct, Sue?
Yep.
Yeah.
One.
One teacher, one teacher that impacted you. And I might ask when I send out my notes to just add one more thing onto it but that's what it's gonna start out with. Okay? All right. 4.7 would be our board meeting calendar. And so, included on your.
Can you open the document?
Yeah. Included in yours.
It's just not gonna show it very well.
Okay.
Do you want the memo or the?
Not the memo.
Not the memo, just the calendar here. So, what we have is our calendar for next year. And notice that there are, we don't have three meetings a month. We have just the two, which is kind of nice for it. But there's some in red that if you look down, well, those are the birthed ones, so where am I living at, Schaefer? I've forgotten.
Well, there's.
The spring break one.
The spring break one is a little interesting because if you look at it, we typically have our meetings on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. In March, however, the third Wednesday is during spring break. And so, that shifts it to the fourth Wednesday in March. And then by shifting it to the fourth Wednesday in March, then we would have another meeting the very first Wednesday in April. So, that's the only kind of funky thing with the calendar. Again, one's a regular meeting and one's a study session but it's, and again, this is for board consideration. It's just, it's hard to have a meeting over spring break especially a lot of staff right here. So, but we're open, instead of canceling it, our thinking was we would just do it on the first and fourth of March. Also, we did cross-reference all of the meeting dates with any holidays and, you know, there's no, to our knowledge, there's no conflict. Scoured and couldn't find any. I think we may be on the road.
So, did you just say or suggest that we would cancel one?
I'm not, no. I'm saying that we would shift for March only, we would meet the first and fourth Wednesday. Just be aware that April, you'd have like a meeting two weeks.
Yeah.
The other thing is, as you, we don't have the locations yet for the study sessions. We, I wanna confirm with the board that we wanna continue meeting in schools. We've obviously started at this year mid-year, but it's really what the board wants. We can continue meeting in schools for the study session, we can move it back to the boardroom. All, it's not necessary for the vote, they basically, you're just voting on the dates because we wanna publish that. In terms of locations though, I would like maybe a little discussion tonight just so that we can tee that up or at least put the schools on notice, you know, for planning purposes.
What are your feelings about the ones in the schools? Is it convenient, is it comfortable? Nancy?
The only, I mean, I like going to the schools, I really do. I think it's great to go out and see them. The only problem I have, I don't know if I know one, is the noise. It makes, sometimes it makes it really hard for me to.
To hear?
To hear. Like when we were at Cotton Bowl, it was really hard to hear and I think it was even hard for people in the audience. I mean, I don't know what the solution to that is but, because I don't know that there's another room at the schools that could work.
Yeah. It's just whether you wanna, your feelings about staying at schools or going back to the head building. So, schools, Dawn?
I have an idea. So, one thing I noticed in our community forum last week was that it was the first forum that we had that was 100% people with all sorts of different things. And it was like what I always thought it would be like, you know? And so, it, I just thought that that was really cool to see and I, I think that that might have space with, with the idea of what we, whatever we choose to do in schools because I think there was something about it that was people coming because it was at their community schools, like, I don't know, 60, 70% of the people there were, that was their home base and so they came out for that. And so, I imagine that there's something we could do with that in the idea of us having more meet and greet. Because right now, when we come, we still are only seeing the people who are presenting and then they leave right away. And so, I think there's, like, if we're really gonna do this in the schools and have it be meaningful, I think there's a way to partner that a little bit where we spend more time together. And I don't have a fully baked idea but I just wanted to throw that kind of out for us to think about.
Interesting, Dawn. Other ideas?
Yeah, I picked up this idea at the CASB conference and then shared it with the rest of you. I go along with what Dawn said. The school district that does this, the session that I attended at CASB, was Durango and I'm certainly willing to contact them or Dr. Schaefer, somebody in your office can contact them to see what they do. I don't recall if the presenters said that there was a lot of participation. I really liked the idea but I've been, I guess, a little disappointed that we haven't had folks from the attendance areas of the various schools come and stay. And so, I don't know that unless we can fix that in some way, that we can appeal to them to stay for a meeting, et cetera, then I'm not sure that it really serves much of a purpose. So, I'm happy to come to the schools but it doesn't accomplish what I thought it was going to accomplish based on what I earned in Durango. So, you and I can talk and I can give you the contact information of the person that did the presentation.
Something more to think about.
Yeah.
And if they were back at the district, could they live stream?
The district could absolutely live stream. Seeing we are recording, it's now, we post it the next day. The district does allow real-time live streaming.
So, it's just another angle to think about.
The only, the only way we could, like today, to accommodate what you're talking about, it almost seems like we'd have to, say, meet and greet starts at five and the study session starts at six. If we wanted to try to get, you know, more, more people here from the neighborhood to like talk with us, then we might, but that could make for a longer.
I was in the same study session.
Okay.
And I also forget what they're, but I was really intrigued by their, by just the notion of going into the schools, into the communities. But, yeah, it's not, I don't know what I really expected. But, yeah, I mean, we're happy, the two of you are here.
Yeah.
But, you know, and I guess staff time, travel time, I mean.
Am I smarter than?
Is it, I don't know, just like logistically but, you know, yeah, I'll have to go back to my notes from CASB because there was some huge draw for me to go into the schools and just more of like that grassroots type thing, like we're coming to you, you don't have to come to us for everything, but.
Yeah, in fact, maybe I think you and I chatted for a minute after that session was over and we thought.
Right, it was the best thing since.
We should present this as a possibility but it hasn't turned out the way either one of us thought it was going to, so.
Right, yeah. So, I guess.
Can you sit down?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that was under.
Oh, no, I mean, I could go either way. I agree with, with what people are saying, there's advantages to both but if, you know, I, yeah, I would be interested to hear more about what you were talking about, yeah.
I just have a quick question. How much extra staff time does it take to set up at individual schools? Videography, admin, you know, cabinet?
Yeah, I would say, certainly I know it's, right, a lot. I mean, for him, certainly, and the school does have a little bit of setup time. In terms of travel time, I know my team is delighted to go wherever it's called.
Yes, they are.
Especially with ties to meetings. Oh, no. So, there is, there is a little bit of logistical, but I mean, all meetings require a setup.
I know there's more for a school meeting.
I almost forgot because that's what happens at my age. But, what I wanted to know is, we did one round of visiting classrooms this year with you, correct? All right. And we've had a lot of different morning things at some of the schools and I know that doesn't work for everybody but if we get an invite to something like a breakfast or a coffee or, and they, we let them know that don't expect the board but expect one or two people, that would be a more feasible opportunity to have meet and greet with them and just visit in their schools and we show up there when it works for us, you know? It's not everybody but the opportunity is often there for many of the schools. Or not.
Another think about, 97% of this agenda has nothing to do with Lucille Irwin School.
Right.
And so, if this was more Lucille Irwin-centric, you might have people that would come to meetings.
Sure.
And so, I think, you know, we had a student presentation, I suspect parents were with them and it was over and so, again, nothing really else on this agenda speaks to Lucille Irwin. You know, I like the idea or at least it's intriguing to me about maybe having like a meet and greet or having something specific to the school where there was an opportunity or forum for parents or community members to maybe share feedback or input around the school or school needs. We have successfully gone out into the community and, you know, I think about long ago this started, and people come, you know, they know you're gonna talk about their community and you're gonna engage with them. Trust that would be another example, the cop and community. So, if it's targeted and specific to the school, I think that's great. Otherwise, you know, this isn't, it's a great meeting and you're right, we might as well just have it in the boardroom because it's really nothing Lucille Irwin, et cetera.
But just dawned on me is that I think the Durango School District is maybe five schools or four.
Yeah.
And so, just that difference in size and number of buildings might be what contributed to them being, to their feeling that this was really valuable because it was a smaller audience and kids and parents who came to the meeting at such and such an elementary school might also have somebody at the middle school and the high school. So, that, that could be the difference.
Another think about, I know that when we, during the board walkthroughs, we often started or ended the day with a staff meeting and many of those were well-attended. So, for example, if we were to, let's say, be at a school, maybe it starts at the end of their school day with a staff meeting, many were attend, and then maybe it continues on with, you know, a meet and greet with the community and then goes into a board meeting. Now, you will clear the room probably for the board meeting but having you at the school, you would certainly engage teachers, staff, which I know is really important to the board, as well as community members. But honestly, if you say this is gonna be focused on this school, so just another think about.
I like that from, from the idea that, what I was thinking about the community forum piece, it, that would, that would be talking to people in a way, in a place that's organic and it makes sense and sure, some of them will decide that it's time to run home and feed the kids but at least there's, there's a purpose to it. And to the point of us clearing calendars and how hard that can be, if we've committed a half a day to something, that is actually, I think, easier usually than popping in and out for just an hour too. Like, I know that's the case for me, it's easier for me to say I'm gonna be there and I'm gonna do this and then we kind of fit everything in.
So, you're saying for our study sessions, you would basically start around or?
Good, it would depend on the level. So, like, we know that, for example, middle schools get out around, I think, 4:05, 4:00 time. You've got high schools that get out around 3:50. But you would, we would start at right at 3:50 but because you'd love the kids to clear out. But let's say we were doing it at Mountain View High School. We might say that at 4 o'clock, or members that were able to attend, we would meet with the staff, let's say, in the library. I suspect that if the board came to Mountain View and said we're gonna meet with the staff, you'd have a great turnout and it would be a great, you know? And then, let's say, that goes for 30 or 45 minutes and then you would then meet, then you'd have maybe a community reception and then say we'd love to do the Mountain View community and talk to you about Mountain View issues or Mountain View, whatever. That would probably be really well-attended and then you could go right into your study session. That would adjust the time probably, start time of the meetings and it would be, it'd make for a longer day. I would also submit that maybe it doesn't require all seven of you to be at those meetings. I mean, we do a good job kind of like signing up for, like, I'm, you know, we've had very effective meetings where two or three of you talk to the staff and they love that. It doesn't, so, maybe you choose like one or two a year to kind of do the long haul but that's just another way to approach it.
I guess my concern is because, well, we don't have a study session. I guess my concern is, because, well, we don't have a study session in December. So there's a limited number of schools we could do this with. And then the other schools, the teachers, it's like, well, I want to, you know, when do we get to talk?
It wouldn't be mutually exclusive, like, you're free to come to anything you want. We could even bill it as a theater, and so just say, we're in the Mountain View Theater. We've got middle schools and elementaries that feed into that, so it's not specific to the school, but maybe the theater. And we also would do it on a rotating basis, so it may take two or three years to get through all of them. But again, I think the effort would be appreciated certainly by the community, and that would really, that might cut, you know, maybe that would be in lieu now of our community listening sessions, or, you know, or maybe, whatever the board's pleasure is, I'm just, I'm trying to, I know there's high interest in the board to try to engage and interact with the community and staff, and this needs correction.
Well, we tried this, and I think our sense is, it hasn't resulted in what we hoped or thought it was going to result in, so I think maybe it's time to try something else. I like what you suggested, and regarding not being in every school every year. This year, we weren't in all the schools on this particular way of conducting the study sessions. So maybe this is what we want to try.
I think if we rotate in the theater, too, so that, you know, it's Mountain View one year, we're one time, and then, you know, Winona the next, that also kind of feeds our desire to be in the different communities in different ways. And we see different schools, and, you know, we kind of pepper our way through.
They kind of signed up for those, didn't they?
They did.
For their time.
And we encourage, so we obviously didn't, we got to a certain number of schools with presentations and stuff, so we will encourage schools that we didn't go to to sign up for next year, so it was a rotation.
So this will be kind of on hold until we?
So the board will, we will respectfully ask that on May 17th, you just approve the dates. We'll work on locations. I'll probably want to, as we get, maybe in the summer, we plan, we can talk about, if you want, those extended days. Where we do like a staff meeting called the Community Forum, called a study session.
And maybe they don't all have to do that, right?
I, just one last thing, I just wanted to point out that at the last DAC meeting, when they were putting together the board for commendations, the one thing that the majority of the DAC, everybody, teachers, everybody, they really wanted the community forums to continue. I'm just, I'm just sharing.
Exactly.
Just letting you know that that's what DAC.
Okay, thank you.
To that, I think over the summer, we would hope that we have a summer retreat. We can certainly talk about people who are as interested in continuing.
Sorry to throw that out there, but.
It's just, they've been interested, is all I would say. All right, 4.8, I think it's Bill again. Did he keep his tie on? He's going to talk about superintendent evaluation, because we have a big job coming up between now and our next meeting on the 17th. And Bill's going to go with that.
Thank you. So if the board's okay, because I'd like to have more questions than go over the whole presentation, because the majority of this presentation was from December, so I took that information from December just so everybody could review the evaluation. And all of you are familiar with evaluation, because you evaluated the superintendent with this evaluation, and nothing in the evaluation has changed. So thank you for this opportunity to talk about superintendent's evaluation. Next slide.
Did you want to leave the?
STRI, STRI 2025, talks about human talent. Purpose and value of superintendent evaluation, you can have a moment and kind of read through that. Next slide.
I'm sorry, YouTube didn't have me back at all.
And then there's board policy, CBI, and CBI regulation, that goes over the evaluation, the superintendent?
Bill, there are five links under 4.8. Which link are you on?
He's on the bottom one.
PowerPoint. Yep.
And everybody should fill out an email today, right?
Yes, yep.
Then ask all your, as your.
So I'll cover that, too.
Okay.
So to the next slide.
Sorry, Bill.
No, that's right. So part one of the evaluation talks about, there's eight parts to it that you'll be doing the evaluation on. So they're the four parts that cover STRI 2025, is student achievement, inclusive and supportive culture, human talent, stewardship of resources. And then part two covers five through eight, which has to do with leadership with the Board of Education, with all of you, shared vision, advances district excellence, advocate for public education, lead through transparency and strong relationships with the board. So those are the other four parts of the evaluation. So the workbook, there's four parts, there's four forms with there. So Form 4 is what I sent all of you today, just like last year, I gave you access to it. It's a Google Doc, so basically you would just complete that, and then when you're done with that by Monday, May 15th is the deadline, then I'll be able to take all the information and put it into the summative evaluation and then do the calculations from there. And if you didn't receive it, you can just let me know and I'll resend it to you. So part of the compliance of the superintendent's evaluation, we're in compliance with everything up to this point. You can see May 15th, board members submit individual evaluation to myself. And then May 17th, executive session for year-end evaluation. So that's in compliance because of the evaluation, well, the contract says by June 30th, year-end review. So year-end compliance for that piece. And that basically goes over the rubric of what you're evaluating on. That gives you an idea of looking at standard one, student achievement, it kind of gives the element, and then the, you know, goes over the standard, and then the elements are underneath, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and there's a rating of highly effective, effective, partially effective, and ineffective. So that would be your goal to evaluate this one time, you're talking about these standards. And then there's comments about strength and growth. And then other discussion items at the next meeting we voted on. So there's the routine reconciliation of the superintendent's unused vacation days, 22, 23. So per contract, it's under the fridge of benefits. So at the option of the board, accumulated vacation days may be paid out prior to the end of the contract year. So that's something that you would vote on next year. And then it's up to 20 days at the next meeting. And then the other thing you'd vote on is the superintendent's contract, which you'll have more discussion at the executive session at the next board meeting, which I'll have the opportunity to come in and just go over the data piece and then exit, and then you'll have the opportunity to have discussion with the superintendent.
Any questions for Bill?
Yeah, so the exec session is not on our calendar, and it'd be really awesome to get that on sooner rather than later with as busy as everything is right now. I would absolutely hate to be running late to that.
So an hour is what we plan on?
I would say an hour, but we need negotiations.
Or negotiations as well.
Oh, so earlier, than 4 o'clock?
So, so we can talk.
Oh, 5 o'clock.
Yeah, so there's a presentation that I'll go over with Andy and myself, we'll go over that, and then can I answer any questions? And then talk about where we're at with negotiations.
The exec session?
Well, at the next presentation, I have, I'll cover that, and then go into the executive session on the 17th.
So executive session will be two topics?
Correct.
Negotiations and then?
Superintendent evaluation.
So starting at 4:30? I mean, 5, no?
Hour and a half.
4:30.
At 4:30, you can.
Is that doable?
I'll send it to anybody right now.
Thank you. As of right now, yes. If they were not efficient, then yes, I can commit to it.
Maybe we could start with the brief negotiations and then we go into this.
Yeah.
We do that that way so that Alexandra can.
Alexandra, does that work?
She said she'd try.
I'll try.
Yep, that's all you can do.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
And if any questions come up as you're doing the evaluation, just hit in on me and I can help respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then 4.9 is the standard action consent items. We just have two listed, but there'll be a long list, but it's just for that placeholder, we'll be on our agenda. Okay? All right. CASB update, Stu, is there much? A lot?
Not a lot.
Okay. Do we want to get up and move first, or do we want to, should we, let's just, okay, we just go ahead and do it and then have a quick break? Just a quick one? Okay.
Okay. First item I highlighted for you in yellow, the reports that you have the opportunity to look at is that the legislative session is set to wrap up on Monday. So I spent a lot of time on this particular report because I had it done. And then I went into Bill Tracker and found that, oh, that's now in a different status. So I believe what I'm sharing with you is correct, or what you see here is correct. And I have updates on three particular bills, and that's what I have. All right, the first one, we talked about last time, House Bill 231191, which is the one on corporal punishment. I'm not going to read what the legislative report sheet says, I'm just going to tell you what the update is. Though recall, the last study session, I mentioned that there was conversation about how this particular bill affected athletics, athletic participation, practices, et cetera. And so I have three pieces of additional information for you about this bill. I'm not sure whether they were amendments, all of them, or clarifications, or whatever. But anyway, here's what I have for you on HB 231191, dealing with corporal punishment. The bill does not make inflicting corporal punishment a crime. Okay, that's the first thing they decided. Reasonable and necessary force can be used to quell a disturbance, for self-defense, and to remove a weapon or dangerous object from a child. And then finally, one that actually addresses athletics. Pain or discomfort experienced during athletic competition or physical activity is not covered if a child is participating voluntarily. So in other words, have an athletic practice, the kid is there because he wants to be on the football team or volleyball team or whatever, and if the student experiences pain or discomfort, if the child is there voluntarily, then that's not covered by this particular bill. And that's the decision they reached on that. The other one I want to mention to you is HB 231259. The title name is the Open Meetings Laws and Executive Sessions Violations. I'd been waiting to report on this until I had a little more information to tell you. So I'm going to read you a statement that I received. Presently, citizens can sue school districts if the school board violates the open meetings law requirement for executive session. As I read this, this will sound familiar to us as a board. This bill would make modifications to the open meetings law to give boards additional time to cure, and cure is in quotation marks, any violations of the open meetings law with regard to executive sessions before someone could challenge the board's action in court. The person who intends to challenge the violation would have to first provide notice to the secretary of the board. The secretary and the challenger would communicate to discuss if the challenge can be resolved without a court filing. If the board cures the violation, the challenger would not be able to sue. And so you'll recall that several months ago, our board was among a number of Colorado school boards that were sued, all by the same attorney, for violating executive session requirements. This bill then allows us, or another board, to resolve the violation without a court filing and thereby prevent the suit. There was widespread, universal, statewide approval of this idea. And so that's where we are on this one. The last one is not an education bill, but I want to bring you up to date. And thanks to Dr. Schaefer for giving me some additional information this morning that I wasn't able to get through CASB. This is the agricultural land and urban renewal area. This is Janice Marchman's bill. Because there were no amendments in the House to the Senate bill, she introduced it in the Senate. It went through the Senate, there were no amendments in the House. The bill is now headed to Governor Paul Oles for his signature. Now, last night, this was not reported in the Reporter Herald, and that's why I'm thanking Dr. Schaefer for giving me this information. The measure passed Loveland City Council on a 7 to 2 vote last night. The language of the bill says, this act applies to urban renewal plans approved on or after the effective date of the act. Because the governor hasn't signed it yet, my understanding is that it won't apply to this particular development because it is not retroactive. So even though it's not an education bill, I know it's one of high interest to Loveland community, it's high interest to us as a school board because of taxing ramifications. And so that's where we are with it right now. And Barb, as a member of the committee, do you know anything beyond what I said?
Uh, no, I'm just, yes.
Okay, so that's what I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, all right. We're going to take a really brief break, because I know we have staff here for the next two items, and then we're going to let them go. So, yeah. So just a quick break.
All right.
As you can see, Bill is our next presenter. We are now on our.
Four for tonight.
What?
Four for tonight.
I know. We are on our six, our study session discussion items. And so these are ones, the first two will be probably fairly quick. And then we will have some time for our conversation if we need to. So, Bill.
So Andy, Chris, and myself are presenting tonight. Just going to fast track a little bit, so we met in negotiation on the 27th and 28th. And huge, huge congratulations and thanks to Karen Russo, who kind of does all the notes, and just the amount of notes that she had, and the fine details, I want to highlight the fine details, especially when we have several tender agreements. So then we kind of work on that, we send in the Kyla Steele, who's the vice president, right? So she oversees it, so everything you have in front of you, you know, multiple people have looked at. All right, so STRI 2025, presentation we connect through human talent through the negotiation process. The discussion items for tonight, review highlights from the 27th and 28th, like I said. Gordon Jones, CFO, gave an update on the state budget, so he does a great job coming in. And then he works with small groups later on if they have questions, so him being a part of it has been extremely helpful. Two plus two is two administrators, two members of the association meet. We're kind of the oversight committee for negotiations. We kind of make sure we're on the right track. We formalize the critical questions of what's being moved to negotiations, so that's kind of our role. So it's Andy and myself, Melissa, and Kyla Steele are part of two plus two. And then tonight, instead of going through all the notes, right, there's extensive notes in there. And to get to the tender agreements, there's a lot of great discussions that get to that point because we use the interest-based model. So for the purposes of tonight, we'll get to the tender agreements that we've talked about. We haven't completed the compensation question, that's why we're meeting on the 9th of May from 10:30 to 3:30 in Cottonwood Plains Room to kind of finalize the numbers with Gordon and then see what we can move forward.
I think it's still coming.
Yep, so it's open to the board, it's open to the public, so they'll be sitting in there. Okay, so it's not in order, it's in the order of how we have the discussions and completion. So question four, how do we ensure educators are well-prepared to deliver high-quality instruction on a daily basis? So the tender agreements that we're going to talk about are the ones that we agreed to on the 27th and 28th. There are other tender agreements that at the next board meeting, we'll go over the whole list of tender agreements with the other questions. Like, we spent a good, it felt like a good three days talking about ESS. So those tender agreements are what has been presented to the board before. So instead of taking all of the tender agreements, we're just talking about the ones that we agreed to, and then you'll see what the complete package is. So I'll go back to that one real quick. So a tender agreement on this one is, just know there are different, like, there are multiple options that we have discussions about, and there are certain things that we can move forward for a STRI design. So the large group approved, meaning a large group approved it, like, there's a tender agreement for that. So the board would do a tender agreement, like a ratification of the agreement, the whole package. So you're just seeing pieces. And then what we'll do is. And then what we'll do is, we'll take questions on each slide, so if there's something come up, any questions, we can take it right then and there. All right, so propose that the following line from 16-1-3 be removed from the MLU. It eliminates EdCamp, so EdCamp will be offered as an opportunity during this time. So we're taking out the EdCamp idea. EdCamp was a solution to a problem when we didn't have professional development days, like the full professional development days. And EdCamp was optional for staff on, you know, it was really on the schedule, like current teacher conference schedules, workdays.
Bill, was EdCamp during the pandemic, or was it?
It was prior to the pandemic.
Prior.
Yep.
So we would have EdCamp. And when we didn't really have a professional development, a whole lot of professional development resources, we would crowdsource professional development teachers with lead. When we, when we moved back to late start Wednesdays, we said, how can we keep that idea going, so we made EdCamp optional during workdays? But at this point, a very small percentage of teachers are taking advantage of that EdCamp opportunity on a workday, as you might imagine. So just, it wasn't an efficient use of resources. Now that we have five full PD days, we could take a big jump.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, next slide.
Okay. Continuing on question four. We agreed to give buildings a little bit more time to develop a Wednesday staff development schedule. Thinking on this is that in the original, well, I'll answer questions in a minute. So instead of the last day of August, buildings would have until mid-September to submit their Wednesday late start schedule. The first late start Wednesday of each month, this will be added to 16-1-5, is designated for special programs to have an opportunity to meet as a district group during the late start time. And it lists, this is already a current practice, something that's already happening, but we're now adding it to the MLU. Then we would add a 1615A. And it says that elementary PLC time will be held on two late start Wednesdays per month. The first Wednesday of each month will be designated for these PLCs, and the second day will be decided through the building's trip late start PD plan. Teams are not precluded from choosing to engage in PLC work during their plan time, but we're setting aside late start Wednesday time for elementary PLC. This is a solution to trying to get some more planning time for elementary.
So, so when I was at the Monroe anniversary, I was talking to Dr. Monroe. He was one of the kindergarten teachers. But she brought up about the, how the PLCs meeting kind of interfered with the plan time. And so what you're saying is, this removes that, that makes it more flexible, that barrier, so that they don't have to be in a flat, their plan time is going to be--
That's the intent.
Instead of PLC solely being during the plan time, right? It gives opportunity to the whole school coming together to work on PLCs. And then for plan time, we had great discussion about mandated elementary PLCs. Time will be held on two late start Wednesdays per month. This does not preclude a team from choosing to engage in PLC work within their plan time. And then include a tender agreement for the 23 through 25 school year. Schools will engage in site-based study to determine opportunities for increased elementary plan time in their schedule. So currently, right now, and this is solely elementary, because right now there's a minimum of 300 minutes. So some schools build a master schedule that there's like an additional 20 minutes, you know, per month, or 20 minutes per week. So it just depends what your master schedule is, and, you know, sharing, sharing special teachers too impact the schedule. But it gives an opportunity to explore, if it's minimum, what are some other areas that can be figured out to help especially elementary teachers get more plan time? And that was a large group approved.
Say the, also the intent is to give us information going forward. Can we realistically add plan time to the, to the language bill, you know, two years from now? Okay, so question two. We had a few tentative agreements around recruiting and retaining. This STRAW design around the budget study team, this is a small group of teachers, administrators that have been meeting outside of the negotiations process to look at our salary structure and to engage in some creative thinking on what we can do around compensation and things. And so that team, the negotiations has tasked them with looking at long-term salary structure and goals. It's been, our extra duty salary schedule is tied to our 2014 salary base. Or 2013 salary base, it's a long time ago. So the, what do we want our salary structure for extra duty to look like? What kind of salary adjustments in terms of stipends and placement for certain ESS staffs so we can better recruit those teachers and special service providers? And can we offer alternative column placements for overly, not overly, but highly credit-intensive master's degrees? Master's degrees that would require 60, 70 credits. Right now, we kind of give them 30 to 45 credits of credit on our salary schedule, but a couple of our master's degrees, like counseling and psychology, school psychology, are pretty big. So how can we, is that possible? To give them extra column for those degrees? So that's approved?
Any questions?
I have a question. Well, I'm just, so if this group is going to meet starting in August, when, or is it expected that there'll be findings from this group to share with the board?
Yes, the idea--
Yep, so, so next year, like this, like next year will be the second year of a two-year agreement. So basically, it's not a full-blown critical question year, so we start later in the year, April. So for us, like it's really around compensation. So for us, starting early in August, it's helpful because there's some items we need to talk to, and then we can report that, well, we'll report that to negotiations when we start in April of next year.
So the idea is to have that critical thinking and creative thinking time and to develop some recommendations so that when we start negotiating, we have some goals. And then hopefully going forward, as we have conversations with the board, those conversations are more productive as we have a vision.
So continuing the conversation about recruiting and retaining, because it's all about recruiting and retaining when we're talking about those questions. So, so our conversation is, so going into this year, we extended the years of experience. So it was nine or more years of experience, started step 13. So the conversation we're having is to attract people outside of our district. 10 or more years of experience will be honored, and they'll start on step 14. So that's kind of exciting to really keep up with what other districts are doing currently. So having, you know, like honoring 10 years coming in. So it gives other people in other districts opportunity to think, okay, if I want to go to the Thompson School District, because all the, this is a destination district, right? Like, you won't lose if you're in year nine or year 10 in another district. So approved by a large group.
And so question three, we got to on Thursday and Friday, and it's our lead practices meeting that needs of our employees. We got through story, interest, options, and criteria on this question. And we did propose some changes in language to be more inclusive, especially around some of our definitions. But we also recognized the need to research other language, so that we're not missing something. Because when you brainstorm language, you always miss something, so. So that's kind of where that is. So it's not agreed to yet, but there's sort of an agreement and concept to see how inclusive we can be in some of that, some of those definitions, especially around field.
So question five is the one that has multiple parts, so there's five different parts to it. So we use the interest-based model for each one of those. So question five, how do we address MLU cleanup or retention? So A is outperforming the budget by a dollar amount. So currently, right now, if we outperform the budget by a million dollars, then it's, it reopens the conversation negotiations. So, so what we're asking for is flexibility in the conversation instead of a dollar amount. Because a dollar amount for a million dollars is what we've had for a very long time. At one time, we had a $500,000 trigger, and we moved it to a million dollars. At one time, our budget was $129 million, right? So now we're increasing about $180 million, but we still have that triggering point. So just having some flexibility in that. And the large group approved on a percentage of 1.75% outperformance. So not a dollar amount, well, that comes out to a dollar amount, which, like 3.14 million dollars. But still having the conversation of, well, let's say we outperform the budget by 1% or 1.5%, we still want to have that conversation of, okay, so where are we outperforming? Because the concern that came out was, if we have unfilled positions and there's a certain dollar amount, then what can we do around that? So that's an indicator of, you know, so are we 100% staffed yet? And then B is digital teaching and learning. So large group agreed to add language. Teachers working in the TO Thompson Online program will develop their schedules in collaboration with their principals. So just having that articulation of teachers on Thompson Online, having conversations with their principals. The same thing that we do with traveling teachers. If you're traveling, you have two principals, so making sure you have conversations with both principals about making sure you get plan time, like making sure you understand the schedule and things like that. So, so we really reflect it for Thompson Online teachers. And then mandated professional development, so large group agreed to remove a test up, test out option will be mutually developed and offered. So we really looked at 13-6 and took something out that's not even placed right now. So, you know, what current practice is, like we want the MLU to reflect current practice.
I really appreciate the change in the outline of the budget. It just, I think it's, it just helps it, it feels like with the million, it was like, well, any little extra property tax, and all of a sudden now we have to spend. And it's not that we don't want to report, you know, when we outperform, but it just felt really, so I really appreciate the work that you guys did on this.
I appreciate that, and part of the conversation was, we've outperformed the budget every year I've negotiated. 17 years I've negotiated, we've outperformed the budget 17 years. We often choose not to reopen because that million dollars isn't, for whatever, for whatever reason we outperform the budget, we look at it critically and say, well, that's already spoken for, or incumbent but not spent, or it's, is that? So, short version, most of the time we haven't. These last two years where the number is kind of eye-popping, frankly, that we've decided to do that. And so it made sense to us to make that number, that thing a little bit more evergreen. And still, we'll use critical thinking if we look at that number and why it is. You know, two plus two looks at it and sometimes decides to reopen and sometimes doesn't.
I don't understand the statement that begins with large group approved. Is there an extra word in there? Or I don't understand approved on percentage. Can you explain what that means?
I'm happy to. So at this point, in our negotiations language, and I believe Article 7.
Million dollars.
If the district outperforms the budget by a million dollars each year, the two plus two can agree to reopen negotiations from the prior year.
So there's two triggering points--
We agree in the MLU, it's a million dollars plus 50 students. Or if we're over 50 students on our student count, we can choose to reopen negotiations. We agreed to take out the, if the district outperforms its budget by a million dollars, and replace it with, if the district outperforms its budget by 1.75%. So basically, if we're 1.75% to the good on the budget for the prior year, we can choose to reopen negotiations. That way it changes--
I understand what you're saying. I don't think that statement says that. So I'd like you to, to work on maybe wording it again.
So, so there's no--
I'm not disagreeing with the concept, it's the wording.
So there's not the contract writing yet, because like we'll get that to the next meeting, look at the contract agreement, yeah, but totally, totally right. Like we wouldn't take that and put it in MLU, like we have to rephrase it. So thank you.
I'm happy with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Prepositional phrase on percentage? Is that what it's supposed to be?
I'm sorry.
The propositional phrase on percentage, is that what it's supposed to be?
That could be it, Dr. Schaefer. I just think it's kind of an awkward sentence.
I move we hold a 45-minute Robert's Rules discussion. I'd like to hear from each board member. Okay, next slide then, please. We changed language in Appendix A on extra sub-days that early elementary school teachers get for extra work associated with assessments to reflect the current reality. It's less about the mandatory assessment and more about like replans and things like that, so. That's what that is?
So it's just updating for clarity, right? Because what's extensive, so. And that concludes our presentation. Any questions?
I appreciate this presentation, how you, just the format and that you changed it, what you told us you were--
Thank you.
Format. Do you think you'll get done on Tuesday?
Mm-hmm. Yep. You have the same answer? So, so the compensation question, like we've spoken a lot of times about compensation, and we have two different designs. So it's just trying to figure out what the final dollar amount is and what's affordable.
Bill, once again, the board is standing.
10:30?
Uh, 10, 10:30 to 3:30. Thank you, more.
Thank you.
I just want to be polite upfront. My husband just texted me, and he just tested positive for COVID. He and I have never had it. So that's why Amy gave me a mask, but if you want me to go, I am happy to go. So it's up to you guys. I just, Amy gave me the mask because I didn't have one, so thank you. I'll try to pack up.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for watching. No, 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 thank you for being upfront. Yeah, I was like, all of a sudden, I get this text from my wife.
Todd is going to talk to us about 6.2 Monroe Elementary School purchase sale agreement update.
Yeah, tonight's discussion is an update on the purchase-sell agreement for Monroe. So just to ensure, we have transparency with district resources. I just want to update the board on where we're at with the purchase-sell agreement. A little background information is, as the consolidation project happened, the board approved a sale of Monroe. We did enter into an agreement in December of 2022. From there, we've been in contract negotiations. So the current status is, as the developer is working through their development with the city, there's two items that came to light in the last couple of weeks. I'll say the last few months, but we've come to a place where we can talk through them. What the first bulletary notice is the sale price adjustment of approximately 302,000. That is due to the graphic you'll notice on the right. So this is part of a future expansion of Highway 34. So similar to what they're doing for East Loveland. Our plan is to take that all the way through the city. They weren't going to do this when we owned the land, but now that it's turning hands, the developer's going to develop it. They have an opportunity now to require that land be dedicated for future, future growth of 34. So that's why it's different than how we have it now. So the price there is, we're taking that square footage out that really is land that they can't use anymore, and then adjusting it accordingly. So, you know, staffs are working with attorneys of both sides, the city, to work through this, and felt like it was-- and felt like it was a good point, very good spot to accept this offer. Just direction of land that they really can't use. So it did adjust their development that they submitted. The second, second item there is extend the due diligence period from 150 days to 200 days. So they have 150 days really in their original contract to say, here's our submittal to the city. Their earnest money goes hard with us, meaning they can't get refund after 150 days. Because the city, the city's turn on time isn't as quick as we would like or the developer would like. It's putting pressure on that timeframe. So it's not fair to us to hold them accountable to something that we can't even impact. So this is going to give them another 50 days to get a review, final review from the city. So then that way they can say their development's moving forward. So we, their earnest money goes hard with us. So yeah, so it allows them more time to work through the city. So. In the next, just so the board's aware, in the next 60 days-ish, they'll be presenting to the planning committee with the city, their development, and then ultimately, you know, to the city council in the next. Well, I won't put a timeframe on it. In the near future, I'll say. So those are the two adjustments we're going to make to the purchase sale agreement. So anyway, there's no formal approval the board needs to make. They just want to make the board aware of the process and negotiations we're working through to get this hopefully finalized.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So where, so the 200 days, what does ends when?
So it is, we don't have the final date yet because it depends on, there's a couple of trigger times, but it'll be approximately 50 days from May 18th is when the new date will be. So that'll be July, end of July-ish.
And then can I ask a somewhat related but not overly question?
Sure.
About, were we still waiting to hear about the grants for the East Child's?
We are. So actually, just type in board update, it'll be to you. But yes, so we hope to hear Friday, May 5th. We're going to hear from the state whether it's going to be recommended for the state board meeting on Tuesday, or if it's going to be reviewed for another month. So Friday, they'll tell us at least status, what exactly we're at, if it's approved to go to the board, or if we're on hold until, as you mean.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for that? Thank you. Appreciate the update. All right.
Steph, you're pretty golfy, bud.
He's already got his bag packed.
Little dust trails.
So this next part is one of our items that we've had on our discussion. And it's centered around a retreat idea, but I'm going to turn it over to Mark. Mark's going to kind of lead it. I want to be able to just be engaged in the conversation. So have a.
So tonight, want to engage you in a somewhat structured, somewhat flexible conversation around board policy BCE dash two, which is Board Operational Norms, the checklist, which we co-created and currently exists as part of our board working agreements. This is a topic that a number of board members were interested in revisiting and talking about and talking through. And I think the purpose for tonight is to engage in professional and productive discourse, something that this board does very well, in my opinion, and really has opportunities to really talk about this list. And so while I wanted to be organic in nature, I'm going to propose, what I'll do is let me give you a 30,000-foot flyover of how I'd like to approach this, or how I'd like to recommend approaching this. I thought we might first open with just around the shoehorn, maybe one, you know, one person at a time. Maybe just share some high-level thoughts or reflections on this. You can get as granular as you want, or you can just keep it pretty high level, or you can just pass and listen. But the first time through would just be to provide kind of what's on your mind, or what, you know, what are the areas that you are thinking about? Then I thought we would go to, what do we do well? And what I'd love to do is just really have the board focus on of these board operational norms, what, whatever areas that you think as a board that are going really well for us. Because I would, in my view, I think there are a number of these that we do extremely well. And so I would like to maybe eliminate that and maybe just you could hear from each other, these areas that maybe we do extremely well. And then what are those areas of maybe opportunity, maybe those opportunity, maybe those, those norms that we want to really look at? Are we, are we missing any norms that you would like to propose? But at this, at this stage, because we only have about 58 minutes, I thought we would keep this at a fairly high level and maybe do these three passes. And then this is, this is one of those to be continued. What we'll do, and Kate, I'm going to ask you to be our note taker. Instead of using a chart, I'll just have you write down the notes and we can, we'll share that back with the board so that you have a copy of what we discussed. But from there, I think we can springboard into, depending on, you know, the direction of this conversation, we can springboard to deeper or other types of conversations. So is that, does that sound like an okay plan for this? And could I just give a thumbs up? Or if someone wants to do a counter proposal, is there a different way to? Okay. So we'll start with round one. And so round one, maybe we'll just start with Don and I'll vary who starts. But for this one, it's just some high-level thoughts, reflections, things that are just on your mind as we talk about board operational norms.
There is a lot of things that we've worked through in the last six months that aren't accounted for anywhere in what we have documented. I have several recommendations for what is missing. And I, I just want to get it on everyone's radar that, that this assumed, I, I don't know, the bar was at a place where our bar is not. And so there are some things I think that we need to really put into policy as far as practices, as far as how we will treat each other, our staff, our nonprofit partners, volunteers in our community, children, and young adults. And so I do have several recommendations for the kinds of language that I think that we need to be adding in. Because I don't want anyone else to ever be in the position that I would be in ever again. And so I, it's really important to me that none of you have to do with what I've had to deal with.
Still going to?
I'm going to get pretty granular with about number 14.
Great.
I really like that sentence. Actually, it's two sentences. Sorry, I just noticed there was a comma over there. Shouldn't have been a comma.
Give that right timeout.
Let me elaborate just a little bit. I really like this, and I think it's as much as any of us should ever say. If we are speaking as an individual, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for a board member to say, the other board members don't agree with me, I don't think the other board members agree with me, et cetera. Because if I'm the person who is saying, giving that additional information, I don't know if Amy agrees with me entirely or disagrees with the concept entirely. So I guess what I would hope is that if we are going to speak individually, and I know we have the right to do that, that we stick to these words, if not exactly, at least in concept.
I think from my own personal perspective, I think, just going to be honest, I think there's a lot of assumptions made about me that are based on not fact, but again, assumptions, no idea. I think we should all be honest that all of us have at times spoke to other groups and did not say, I'm not representative, speaking for the board. I think it puts board members in an awkward position. If you're talking with somebody now, you have to start focusing your thoughts or words because you want to be careful you don't, I mean, either you trust, we either we trust each other or we don't. I've looked through all the other districts' board policies, and I just could not find anything that's so focused on how the boards can't, board members can or can't talk outside of a meeting. And so I do my best. I know that some of you don't think it's good enough, and there's nothing I can do about that. And so I'm just going to move on.
I don't know that I have, I mean, as far as general stuff, I'm not entirely sure what to say. I do have a suggestion for number 15 about president responding. So I don't know if I should share that now or if I should.
You can't. We're just, we're just on high level. Whatever you want.
Okay. So my thought on that is that we, as far as responding to emails, I think it would be helpful if in those you said, you know, on behalf of the board, we appreciate your comment or whatever. So that, so that it is coming from the board rather than just from you.
I kind of did that one time and I got called out.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But I do hear you and I understand that.
Because the person feels it.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I will, I do understand that. Thank you. That's a good point.
Maybe doing, I don't, I don't know, I don't know about that instance, but I think that I would think that in some way would be helpful.
You can refer to our norms and just say, according to board norms, I.
That's true.
I think, yeah, and we'll keep going around, but it's just consistency. So that everyone receives the same validation in that, you know, that it is something happening in a way. I forward my responses to you and I forward Barb's, and I will always say thank you for, you know, sending this email to me and the board.
I have a couple of items. Let's see. So for the first pass, I think on number 12, I would like to dial in on, you know, we've talked about this, and I'm not sure if we've ever had a policy that really dials in on the amount of time. I just feel like that's still kind of out there. And I don't want staff to be spending, you know, 20 hours or 30 hours on something unless we all like, really, really, we're like, we have to have that info, whether it takes 35 hours or not. So that's just kind of a question for 12. And then number 14. I'm wondering if we want to add a sentence of, I don't know how to word this right. This is kind of brainstorming. We don't con, or try to conduct business outside of board meetings. So we can't say to the media, I would like the board, the other board members, or I would like the superintendent to do X, Y, Z. Because that's basically trying to connect media or business outside of a board meeting. So I just want us to think about that. Because if I call up the reporter girl and said, I really wish my board members would, you know, fund the school libraries better. Like, okay. And I could still say, I'm speaking only as an individual board member, but I'm asking, it's just kind of an awkward thing to, to try to conduct business outside of a board meeting. And then, I, I just really, I think number 15 is just, needs to be highlighted. It's super important that we have the one voice. And yes, we, we all can have our First Amendment rights, but especially if there's a vote that's been taken, that sort of thing, I think that's critical. And then the last one, I don't know what's in here, but I just want to be sure in the future, like social media, we don't use the district logo that, because that applies that we're speaking as a district or for the district. So I think that would be important maybe to get in black and white on the paper. I, I don't know if I'm missing that anywhere.
I would just like to go over number four, concise and our comments and avoid redundancy. You know, sometimes I think if it's already been said, then just let it have been said. You know, you don't need to, again, just avoid redundancy. And I think number five, you know, communicating to all, listening and communicating with civility. And sort of to Don's point, like these are board norms for cabinet members. So we need to be respectful in how we, you know, speak and write to cabinet members. We cannot be demanding, demeaning, name-calling, those types of things. So, and to students, staff. So it's not just, you know, the norms in here, it's the norms, you know, outside when we're, we're speaking to other people.
Do you think we should add language in there to be more clear? Because it's a general statement. I'll just ask.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, board operational norms are not just for us. It's for, but I don't know if that means, to be clarified, that it's for, you know, cabinet members, it's for.
And this is listed. This is not even part of.
Is this a recurring problem that one of us is talking down to students or staff?
Yes.
Well, I was going to say, I would invite us to maybe just stick with this protocol so that we might just, we can go through one more time around.
And then, oh, 13, you know, when we make a decision and we voted on something, you don't need, if it didn't go your way, you don't need to say, well, my other board members didn't vote that way. You know, just sort of, that doesn't, that doesn't need to be said. That's not, it's just not necessary to say sort of like, you know, what was just brought up. So those are my, you know, then 14 and 15, I think. I think if maybe we came up with language, like a statement for you to respond to, because I think going back to the email responses, I do feel that sometimes if somebody writes to everybody and Barb's the only one responding, they feel, oh, well, Amy didn't reply, Alexandra didn't reply. But if there is some kind of language that says, you know, this is on behalf of, on behalf of the board, that's my.
I think when we did this, this was our best thinking at that point in time. And we learned a lot from each other throughout this year of how we work together. I always, as far as 15, I can easily add on behalf of the board. I always listen to what Dr. Schaefer says and take the high road, do it, and don't go deep into your responses. And I found if I said something that indicated I supported them, but somebody else on the board didn't support them, that wasn't the right way to do it. So I now just basically say, I'm acknowledging the email and then try to find what it was about. But, you know, there's, so I will work totally on that. That's one of the pieces. But I think a lot of these, you know, little things like, okay, staying on topic when we're having a conversation. For the most part, we do. But being respectful about a request that I might, I might make would be helpful. Just as we go down, there's little things with each one. I just, I mean, I took my red pen today, Stu. So I could, I could just keep track of those things. Just my quick thoughts. I didn't spend any deep time on it. I just wrote, okay, this could be theirs or, or don't. I just wrote, "Okay, this could be theirs," or, or, "Don't repeat." I had that down. Yeah. Be prepared. You know, there are times when we sit in a meeting and I feel like we're not all on the same page as far as how we prepare. Or we might be listening, listening to the presentation, but then we ask the question that was answered in the presentation. So just being totally together with what we kept going off for our board meetings. That's kind of my, my high-level look at it.
So I'm going to suggest we do one more round of this because you've now had an opportunity maybe to hear each other and maybe there's additional comment or something that you may want to react or respond to. Again, the purpose of this high-level conversation is to really capture themes that the board would like to, we're not going to solve for this tonight. That's not the purpose. We're not going to do any rewriting. But it's really just to, to look at themes. I suspect that there may not even be consensus or agreement on the themes. You know, these are just individual people sharing individual thoughts. And I think that's really the purpose. And I know Kate is busy capturing the theme. So we're gonna, first, we're gonna start with Stu. I'll just alternate them with Stu and we'll just go, and again, we're just reacting and responding to this conversation. And it just, this, to me, instead of going back and forth, this will honor everyone's time and space.
All right. I'm going to actually touch on three themes, but two of them are gonna be really quick. I think we generally do a very good job on number one and number two. From my position as a board member, I feel generally we do a good job. In regard to number nine, I think rarely is that necessary. I don't pay attention to the clock and I don't sense that anybody else is. I have never felt that we've gone on and on about something that we should have limited discussion, so I'm not sure how necessary number nine is. But I want to, I want to talk about number seven because that's the other one that I had indicated. When I became a board member, I had a conversation with Dr. Schaefer and asked him, "Can I talk to another board member about something that concerns me that, or that I might say at a board meeting?" And I don't want everybody to be surprised. And three individuals who are no longer on the board and I have done that, did that on frequent occasions. And I remember one or more of us actually saying, "Because I want somebody on the board to know that this is coming from me, that I'm going to say this. I want to give you a chance to think about it. I didn't say I want you to feel the way that I do. I just don't want you to be surprised." And I have been quite surprised three or four times in the last couple of years by things that were introduced or said maybe during board report or at another time during the meeting and not knowing quite how to react to them because it was such a surprise. And so I guess, I'm asking you a question, Dr. Schaefer. Did I understand you correctly? When you said, "Yes, you can talk to an individual board member to give them a heads-up as to something that you're going to say because you want at least one other person to know it."
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as it's a conversation between you and one other board member.
Yeah, and that's all it ever was.
I think that's appropriate. I think the other thing that, and I just, a lot of times, we may be in a meeting and a thought didn't occur to you until that meeting. And it should be fair for you to, to voice that thought or concern or even a question. The whole reason for avoiding surprises is that we want to be able to be responsive in a meeting. Like, if you have a question that may require some staff research, we'd like to be responsive to you. And so, not that you have to tell me what your questions are, but we want to make sure that we can answer the questions. Some of that we can readily answer. And you all do a very good job. A lot of you forecast or a lot of you, you know, yield seven questions in advance. But, and I think, I, I feel strongly that, you know, we're, conversations are organic and you can't predict where things are going to go. And if something comes up during a conversation and you're like, hmm, you should feel free to bring, I mean, it's not a, it may be a surprise, but maybe you weren't predisposed to asking that question until, you know, but for the fact that that was how the conversation migrated. So I think it's, it's, we do our, I don't know what the word is. We will try to avoid surprise. Like, you wouldn't consciously try to do that, but, but sometimes it, just through the organic nature of conversations, that can happen. That's a long answer to, "Yes, you can talk to."
And just to kind of wrap this up, I'm not talking about communication with you or a member of the staff. I'm talking about communicating with a board member and letting somebody else know, at least one other person know, you may think this is coming out of left field and I want you to know where this is coming from. I felt good when I was consulted. I felt good when I was the one who was doing the consulting.
Yeah, and oftentimes I suspect, you know, you may call another board member saying, "Okay, Alexandra, I'm thinking about blah, blah, blah." I mean, you're not discussing votes or anything, but you don't bounce ideas or just your thinking. As long as it stays with that one person.
Yep.
And it's just a conversation between the two of you, that doesn't constitute, I don't, that doesn't constitute like a violation of open meetings, you're certainly free to cross that line.
Okay. That's mine.
Quite honestly, in general, I think.
Could you speak up? I'm sorry. Oh, here it is, yeah. They're coming. They're coming.
I mean, in general, I don't have an issue with any of these operational norms. I mean, as Dr. Schaefer said, I think we work, we do good work at our meetings. You know, I think for me, no, I don't know. I, I am sometimes at a loss of what I'm supposed to do. Was told to answer, to send questions to the staff before the meeting and not ask a bunch during the meeting. But then when I send questions to the staff and they, and now, so now the blue, now they're reporting how much time they spent, whereas before they never did, now it's held against me. So honestly, I have no idea what I'm supposed to do. I'm not gonna stop communicating with my constituents. I was elected to be a director of District C and to represent the school board entirely as we're all responsible. We're all responsible for the curriculum, the monies, the voters hold us all each responsible. So I'm not gonna stop communicating with my constituents, which is the entire school district. And I know that causes a problem for you. In retrospect, I probably should have handled the press release differently than I did and I apologize for that. But I'm not gonna stop communicating with the constituents. I'm not. And I'm sorry. So I don't know what more you guys want me to say.
What, Sandra?
I don't think there's anything wrong with communicating with constituents. I think, I think it's where you or any of us make it, make it clear that it's us saying it, that it's not all of us. And I think, you know, as, as regards to the press release, that was pretty horrifying, I think. And, and maybe you felt like you were representing yourself as an individual, but it didn't come across that way. And that, I think, where we're in the midst of a very challenging situation and having that happen made it more challenging than I think it needed to be. But I think, I think communicating with people is fabulous. We all do that. Everybody does that. And I think that's great. And that's how we learn and that's how we know what's going on. But I think trying to make that separation very, very obvious that anybody would see it as a separation.
And we'll hold everybody to that same standard, right?
I, I think so.
Right, Dawn?
I think so, 100%.
Okay, Dawn.
Okay. And then in, I mean, in regards to that, going, listen with civility and the intent to understand, I think, you saw a little bit right here where that may not have happened. So I think that's something we can certainly all work on. In regards to the other thing about the being prepared, I think we do all prepare. Some of us have more time to do that than others.
Absolutely.
And I think in regards to sharing, like, asking questions and sharing questions, I think, like you said in regards to Lamb's presentation, you said, "Thank you for answering my questions." And I was like, "Oh, well, I wonder what he asked." So I would, I would like, you've, I think most of those have been being shared with us, but I think having, I mean, maybe all of those unless it's like, you know, what page is this on or whatever. I think having all of those shared with us would be helpful, especially for those of us who may not have the hours and hours to devote to preparing. So that would be, I think that's sort of the, under number 12.
Alexandra, can I tell you another one really quickly? I think that falls under, it becomes the prerogative of the superintendent to decide. The questions that I asked were birthed specific questions relating to some of the information. And I think I understand why you didn't feel that the whole board needed it. Lamb answered my question quickly and I'm satisfied with the way that it was handled.
I think Alexandra's point is a good one. I worked really hard to be, to share everything with everyone. Everyone should be entitled to the same information. Some, there are, rarely there are times where I will see questions that I see as, I don't, I don't mean in a word per function, but I mean they're, they're quicker, yes, no things that, and so sometimes things may slip by. So in Stu's case, in that, that particular example, I think I saw, I mean, if the board would like, I will share 100% of the questions with the board at all times. I'm, I'm fine. I mean, because I, I do want to be absolutely transparent and, and share all that. And that's, and it's actually, you know, you are entitled to all information that if one person asks, you all get that same information. And again, I work really hard to ensure that we try to put that into RFIs, but some of it is just real quick, yes, no, or we're, and so, but I, I think that's something we could talk about. But I, it's easy for me to do because again, the time it takes to, to reply to one, I just BCC all of it. Done. I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm done. I just, I think, ditto to some of the points that I made. Alexandra, really cogent and I appreciate those. I do think, I don't know how to phrase this. I, I think going back to the number, let's see, five, the civility piece where, you know, they're having emails with disparaging remarks in them or emails core, you know, core requesting one board member, core requesting another board member, stuff. That's kind of new, you know, new grounds for us, I would think. And I, I want to hear, I know Dawn hasn't gone second yet. I'd kind of like to hear from her on the, on the final round. But I do think we need to be more civil in our emails to staff. And once again, I'll say, I would like to, I think, add that to number five and, and not disparage them when they're on spring break or whatever it is. It's just, I mean, that's just really unnecessary. Otherwise, I don't think anything in addition to what I said before, so around, so.
Yeah, I think I said, you know, pretty much everything that I wanted to say. And I think when I, I sometimes, you know, before I speak or say something, I go through, you know, well, how would, how would I feel if another board member acted the way that I'm going to act or said the same thing that I'm going to say? And so just sort of that, that check, I guess. But I don't have anything more specific.
The only thing I would, and I think Pam, I need your reflection back on this, but at one point, one point with RFIs, we had a time estimate and it was, I don't know, two hours was all?
For the maximum time.
Yeah, for the maximum time that a staff member needed to spend on it. And I think that was even prior to you. Yeah, I think that that's what, I think, but I, you know.
No, I think you're right because I know I, I did an RFI a while back and you got back to me and said, "This was, this would take staff like 20 hours. Do you still want to continue?" I said, "No." Whatever they can do in the one to two hours that I, you know, is great. So I appreciated that feedback.
Yeah, because every hour that somebody is spending answering or searching out something is taking away money from what we could be spending on kids, is my way of looking at it, I guess. As far as the others, you know, I think we work well together in many instances. I don't think it's always that consistent as far as when it comes to using social media. And I'll be the first to say, I don't get on it very often. I avoid it. But when I happen to go on and glance, it's, it's sometimes very difficult to, to sit and read through what I'm seeing, whether it's perception or what. So that's me.
So Jason Germain says this regularly to me and I feel like it's important for us to hear it. And that is that what happens in the boardroom is reflected in the classroom. How we act is a bar for how our students are gonna act. And having taught this stuff to adults, we often think of what's normal for us being normal for, for everyone. And that's just not, it's just not valid, even in the best cases, right? Even with good intentions, we all have different experiences that got us here and what's normal for me is not what's normal for other people. And that's why we have a norm. And that's why we have ethics and civility, is because when these things don't work, you wish you had it. Because if you don't talk about it, then you leave it unchecked. And so I, I do think that that's important. I know that I have been contacted so many times in the last couple of years by people really concerned by what they're seeing. And many of them come to me, being that they know me, to say, "Why is that going unchecked as well?" Right? And so when we're not talking about it or holding ourselves to this, and I think we're trying to, I think the mechanism's in place, but people still are like, "Well, why was that okay?" And, and then I know that the much of what I'm concerned about, we would not accept from employees, we would not accept it from students. And so while we all are individuals, we also are accountable to our community in even what we accept from each other. Not just how we personally show up, but in what we will accept because, because we also are the employers, right? We also are HR. We also are these things. And so I know that I'm, I've been contacted numerous times because that was happening. With that being said, I do have some concerns around number 10, around PII, about FERPA, about HIPAA, about HR, about discriminatory and illegal practices that have happened into the microphone from the dais. And we, as a body, have accountability for what we accept. Because if we're discriminatory as individuals, I mean, yes, the people understand that we're, we're all individuals speaking for ourselves, but there's a point when, when if we're breaking our own policies, the law, the state law, federal law with what's being said. I really am concerned about how far outside of, of a norm document that is, right? I think that we ended up in that territory because that seems like something that so many of us just wouldn't do. And, you know, we want to be clear, right? And, you know, we want to be clear, right? The best way for us to hold each other accountable is to be clear on what we expect. So I say all this and it is, is hard for me because going back to what we do well, we have an amazing team who works as a team, and that is not, that's not how this is set up. And I am so grateful for the dedication and hard work and the heart and soul that, that we put into this work and how great we, we are coming to the table. And I wish so greatly that what is normal for me would be normal for everyone else, right? It'd be so much simpler, right? I wouldn't have been married three times if it was that simple, right? I mean, seriously, that's legit. It's not that simple. My norm is not everyone else's. So with that being said, I, I, I think that part of what I struggle with is that we don't have, I don't think that we have a, a full mechanism for really holding each other accountable. I know that we are trying to talk about it, we have spent a lot of time on this, so we're trying, but it just feels as if our community is looking to us to say, "Wait, that was illegal, why didn't someone shut that down?" That is racial discrimination, that is religious discrimination, why is that being unchecked? And a norm that I think many of us has is that we want to let everyone be here autonomously and responsible for their own words, and that, that those things just don't fit together very well, right? Because we don't all have the same intent even, not just norms but intent. So I am really worried about where we went off the rails as, as far as community partners, as far as our accountability to the people that we serve, because there's only so far that my, that my individual rights go before I am at the dais representing this board. And legally that has some, some teeth to it that I think we need to spend some time on. I love, like, I really think that the other things that we've talked about here would also really tighten some things up that have been wonky, so yay, but in the end, I think that we do need to probably double the size of this document, which isn't my favorite thing to say, but I think it's what it needs to be able to say, not only are, am I going to do these things, but here's what it would look like if that doesn't happen. Because right now, if it doesn't happen, we all just process it.
So in a moment, we're going to do one more pass around, so I'm going to have you, I'm just trying to go with the flow of the conversation here. In a moment, I'm going to, I'm going to start with Nancy because we're just going to keep this rotation going. What either norms or themes would you like to go deeper with? And so not tonight, but in the future, we will just kind of gather your thoughts, but are there specific operating norms on this that you'd like to go deeper with? Are there things that are just general themes that maybe you, you want to see that are not reflected in this document? So that's kind of sort of what I would like you to comment on in this last go-around. I, I will state that this board has done some brilliant work together, and I will also state that you've been vulnerable with each other, you've, you've shared, you know, it's during some of our retreats, you've, you've shared personal insight and reflection about who you are as a person, as a human being. I personally feel that each and every one of you have values and reasons why you are on this school board, and I think in, at your core, you feel that what you are doing is in the best interest of, of who you are as well as who maybe your constituents. So, you know, and, and I think that as people, we, we show up differently and we express ourselves differently, but I, but I do feel that you, you each, you come to the table with your, your core values and your sets of beliefs, and sometimes it coalesces into brilliance and sometimes it coalesces into some dissidence, and that's okay, right? I mean, I think it's good to have those conversations, it's necessary, obviously not, not okay, it's necessary sometimes to have dissidence, and sometimes through that we, we end up in a different place, which may even be better. So, so having said all that, Nancy, we're going to start with you, and again, Kate's just going to capture, we're not settling for anything tonight, but I just really, this is help, hopefully it's helpful, but I, I really want you to just share what you really want to go deeper with, and again, we will put this together and look at it in a retreat.
For me, again, I see that this norms checklist is just fine. I think, I think what, in, in my view, what is needed is a little bit more grace for each other. Quite honestly, in the time I've served with you guys, there have been several of you that have been quite abrasive and short with me, and I did not call you out on it. I don't hold a grudge against you, it's just like, okay, we're all human, you move on. So, you know, I know that there's a lot of things being said without being said, and this is, you know, it's not easy being one of seven and you know that you're, you're basically the, the topic, but no one's saying it, and so that's not easy. But I think these norms are fine, I think we work well together. Do we always agree? No. And so I think we are modeling to the students, you know, like, life is messy and you still stay together and you still work through and you still do good work together, and I think that's what we've shown the community and the students, so.
Alexandra.
I don't know that I have a lot to add, I mean, I think the ones that we've sort of talked about mostly are the ones that, that, I guess, I think it's, I mean, this is sort of interestingly, I mean, hearing Dawn talk about the, you know, what are the consequences or whatever, I mean, it's sort of interesting thinking, right? Our Supreme Court is going through this right now for basically the same thing, right? And they don't have consequences, they're the toss of the world, so how do you, so how do you deal with that? I don't know. You know, I think that's a good, I think that's a good, a good question, you know, and I think maybe that's something to, and I don't think any of us want to like punish people or whatever, you know what I mean, but I think that's an interesting thing to sort of think about.
Yeah, I agree. Our norms don't have teeth, so, and we all know that, which, having said that, I still think they can be improved upon. I think the ideas shared around the table tonight, there are a lot of good things tossed out and several things we need to dig deep on. You know, the HIPAA, the FERPA stuff, I think we need some legals, some good, good information around that. And definitely our, you know, number five, the civility, we, we're not going to always agree, and school boards or whatever governing bodies don't agree, but I do feel like we do a good job of listening and trying to understand the intent of each, you know, of where we're coming from, because we do all come from different places. We have, you know, parents and grandparents and retired teachers, and it's really, you know, nurses, it's amazing really for us to come together. So overall, I, I do think we do a good job and I think these can be improved upon and, you know, we can make progress and, and move forward and, and do a better job.
Sort of to reflect on, so after I spoke, I sort of, you know, we've spent a lot of time on the norms, a lot of time on these operational norms. What are the consequences for, you know, violating or not acting within the norm? So I guess that's my question right now, is we can all sit here and say, "Yay, I agree with these, these are all fine," and then go out and violate or go against one of the operational norms, and it's like, so what? So I guess that's my question. You know, I don't want to repeat what's been said, I think we do have topics that we're digging deeper, but what, what do operational norms mean? I mean, I, I don't know, we haven't all signed this, we haven't all taken an oath, we haven't done, you know. So I guess that's sort of what I'm, I'm struggling with, we're spending a lot of time on this. Right, right, so what, I mean, yeah, we're all different, we come from different points, and so, I don't know, do we not have any operational norms and just say it is what it is? Right, but what, I guess what does it mean if, I guess that's where I'm stuck, is, where do we go? Where do we go from here? I mean, we could have four pages of board norms.
And they can have a book out.
For sure.
Or go to flip page.
Right.
And that's truly an issue for all boards, right?
Right.
The lack of teeth, this is a, this is a universal issue.
Right, so.
Yeah, to throw the baby out.
Yeah, so I don't know, but, you know, I think we've had some of the main topics if we are going to, you know, go deeper on some of them, but I guess my bigger question.
Okay, I probably should have thought about this a little bit more, but I guess what I would say, and it's not necessarily giving you anything, I'm sorry, but what it is, is the, the board, the dais that we sit at is a place of respectability, it's a place of really doing business that needs to happen and to speak with dignity, I guess, is what I would say. It is not the place for the people who do public comment, and so if you're going to do public comment, then you go to the, I guess that's kind of all I would say.
Go to the podium?
I mean, I asked Dr. Schaefer about that one time, can we go to the podium and respond or something, and we, we just had that conversation and moved on, didn't we? But there, there is a level of dignity and respect and.
Decorum.
Decorum on the podium, and, I mean, on the dais, and it's not the same as standing up and making a comment or reading something that isn't respectful of the district. So I guess that's kind of where I would put it.
I think we do, two things that haven't came up yet that I think need to be embedded in whatever we do create is insisting that we follow the other district policies. If we expect a kindergartner to do it, we should do it, right? We don't reference that anywhere, so I think that should be said. And we also don't have a reminder of the basics that we are, we're not beholden to special interests and partisan politics. I think that that does have a place in some of the things that, some of the things that have been, haven't felt well is because they got outside of what's best for students and got into an agenda. And so, you know, this is a non-partisan role and we have an expectation to, to do the work with the district, and some of these norms go back to that, right? When I say something and I'm not prefacing, if, if I'm not prefacing it with, "I'm only an individual board member," then I'm starting to imply how I'm going to vote, I'm starting to create a standard to that, and that gets into that realm of the messy stuff. So I think the other piece to this, like, for our own sakes, is that these things also exist for each of us to have those, those guardrails, because that is, like, this was, these were, things were crafted with intention around making sure that we don't get ourselves into trouble as individuals as well, right? And we, of course, we're all real and we're going to, you know, get into some deep stuff and hard things, and if we're not staying within those guardrails, I worry that we are beholden to things and we make commitments to things and they pull us away from the job.
Stu.
Okay. Three things quickly. Because this is who I am, I have been working on an alternative statement for number five that I will send to Dr. Schaefer. I won't, I won't bore him right now with what, with what it says, I'm just going to send it to him, but I think it does cover some of the additional things that we've talked about. Within the last day or so, you probably got Melissa and Todd's response to my RFI, and when I saw the amount of time that it took them to respond, I was surprised, it was three hours. I didn't expect that it would take that long, and so I think sometimes we don't know how long things are, are going to take. I don't think three hours is excessive. When, when one of us submitted questions and the timestamp came back at 25 hours, I did go, "Whoa, that's a lot." And I'm not saying that it, that these aren't hours that should have been spent, but at one point, we did talk about, I'm going to use the term rule of four, and I think it's one that perhaps we want to think about, but saying that, I'm, I'm wondering who could give us the estimate? In other words, when, when Melissa and Todd looked at my questions, could they say, "That's three hours worth, I figured it was an hour, I figured it was an hour." So I know there's no easy solution there, but I think we do need to be cognizant when we submit questions, maybe submitting them in smaller sections or fewer numbers or whatever. This is just occurring as I'm talking, it may not be a good idea. And I'll close by saying, for the couple or three board members who have talked about where, where does the teeth come in? If you've been following what has been going on with Denver Public Schools, with their board, they're a mess, they're all over the place and they're just after each other. And I would say, from what I know, some of that has happened in Loveland City Council as well. And because I don't live in Loveland, but I, you know, do follow a little bit what's going on primarily because I'm a board member, but here's where I'm going with this. No, I don't think there is actually, or there are actually teeth to enforce. I think that the teeth for an agreement like this, and it is an agreement, comes through our trust of each other and our commitment to a common cause, and I don't know what to say beyond that.
So we are, first, thank you. I appreciate everyone's willingness to engage in this conversation and share authentically and candidly your thoughts and reflections. Kate has had her head down the whole time, but we did legitimately, and so I think we captured the notes from today, it's obviously recorded as well, but we will assemble the notes and I'll share that with you all so that you can just have a high level. It's something that I'll ask you to, to think about and reflect upon, and perhaps we can touch base at our one-on-one check-ins in May, but this is, the conversation is to be continued and we will do it, you know, obviously in a public venue, be it in a working session or at a retreat. So I don't have, I don't have any other thoughts or reflect, I mean, comments have been very interesting, I have, I do have some specific thoughts, but at this time, I'll just kind of keep them here. But I, again, I just thank you for your willingness to engage in this topic, and again, this is a to-be-continued conversation. And without any review, the remaining five minutes to our retreats.
Okay, before, before I hit the gavel, I wanted to know, do you want me to pursue finding out if there's days available where we met last year or not? For retreat, for summer retreat.
Yes, I thought it was very good.
In August or? I'll just pursue that.
Before I would commit, I guess I'd like to know what the agenda is.
It could be the continuation of this or, yeah.
Well, probably some of these other things we were talking about, like the calendar or like the.
Public engagement.
Public engagement, yeah, those kind of items that we have to finish up. But if you're okay, I'll just, I'll check out dates. We have a brand new, what do they call it? The organization, well, yeah, we have a new, the people who organize everything. Yeah, probably, that would work, you know what I mean.
You should get on the board, Mark.
Yeah, shouldn't I know?
Yeah, shouldn't I though? I'd love that, wouldn't I? Okay, meeting's over.